If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Slacter, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
To be honored, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cumbia.
Here.
Councilman Dewitt.
Here.
Councilman Slacter.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson. Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Hey, good morning, everybody. How are you?
Good morning, Mayor.
Okay, we're gonna start with public comment. Members of the public that'd like to speak. You wanna speak? You looking to say something? Now's your time. Come on up. Good to see him. Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move along to overview of our presentation process, please.
Good morning. Arlene Hunter, Assistant City Manager. Last night, you received an email from Deputy Mayor O'Flynn, which summarized the thoughts we were gonna go over with you this morning. It may be helpful for you all to look at the list of questions that we provided as just thought-provoking drafts. You all are welcome to amend those in any way. But for consistency in the process and clarity, it is usually best to ask the same set of questions to each applicant as they come in. Understanding, though, that some of them may take more time with answers and questions. We've allotted 25 minutes for their presentation, and Matt and I will be watching the clock to signal to the mayor as we get closer to that timeline. If they complete their presentation earlier, there's no penalty for that. You can just begin your question-and-answer period sooner. But they only do have the allotted 20 minutes till the end of their presentation time to complete the process. You can, of course, ask follow-up questions, or if you need clarification on anything they specifically asked during their presentation that they provided information on, please feel free to do that. You all might wanna have some discussion amongst yourselves on those questions and how you'll be asking those to them beforehand, so that's laid out. If they take... It might be helpful for the mayor, or if you'd like staff to assist with this, to advise each applicant the number of questions you have for them. And then it's up to them during their question-and-answer period to make sure they leave enough time to answer all of your questions in their own timeframe. If you don't get to answer... Get to ask all of your questions, and because they've taken longer with their answers, that's on their side of it. You're not required to give them additional time to continue answering questions.
But we can give them... We can give them, if we're not done asking questions, if they can go past.
That would be an Audrey. I just wanna make sure we're consistent, Audrey. Can the selection committee decide to give them?
Yes. I mean, again, it's what you need to be able to get the information. I would urge caution, though, that you don't monopolize where another person does get detriment. You have, like, a 15-minute setup in between, or...
We do, yes.
So?
We have 15 minutes in between, so there's a little lead time. As a courtesy, the front desk will be asking each team to group in room 118, and then myself and Matt will be... As one group comes out, we'll be getting the other group and bringing them in. We'll need an opportunity to load their PowerPoint presentations as well in between.
Okay, Steve?
Yes. Peter, you... These are good questions. And what I would like to know, should we all select one of them to ask, or how do you want... How should we do this?
Well, these were Arlene's suggestions, and I agree, they're very good questions. I think you want a consensus from us, all of us, on the four questions.
There's eight questions and six of us. Why don't you take three, and we'll all each take one, or we'll take two, and we'll take one, and we'll each consistently. Do you wanna do that?
I'd like...
Is that what you're suggesting?
I'd like to...
You'll keep asking the same question of each applicant?
The last question.
Would that be all right?
You might wanna prioritize... It does take them... They wanna fully... They wanna leave you with a full presentation. They wanna fully explain their answers. When you start to get in these conversations, in our past experience, you probably wanna look to four or five questions at the most, and maybe you wanna rank your selections.
Why don't we do that now, then? Why don't we... There's eight here, is that right?
Excuse me?
We wanna choose the top five? Yes, Amy?
I just... We just got the scope of work this morning, you know? I'm not 100% sure the questions address what we say are our priorities here, so I think the first thing we should do is make sure that the things that we think are the most important things here are addressed in our questions. Unless we feel they're already addressed by their presentation. So I guess that's what I have, because we're supposed to do it on the basis of these five things that we have on this page three, right? Expertise of the proposed team, that's sort of been the application. And hopefully, you know, here we say we want to have projects that are country and worldwide, so I don't know if we're gonna get that.
So typically, when you have reviewed the scope of work along their written proposals, the presentation part is for a chance for you to have some conversation with them and dig a little deeper. So if these are... The question should be getting at the more information you wanna see to accomplish the project.
I'm not sure I follow you. Because I did re...
Staff has vetted the scope of work.
I did look at the presentations. I'm not sure that what they gave us, any of them, did any... You know, would give us our ability to answer these questions. That's what I'm suggesting.
Fred?
Well, I have a different point of view. I've been a lot of...
Tell by the look on your face, that's why I called on you.
No, no. I even asked Audrey, we can do what we want. We can ask whatever questions we want. We don't have to ask the same question to every one of these people.
I was just trying to streamline it.
And that...
Bad suggestion.
Like, Councilman O'Flynn may ask a question of any one of these people, which might require a follow-up from somebody. And... But only with them, unless you... Unless somebody else wants to ask that same follow-up, but you don't... It's not illegal to do what you want. That's all I wanna make sure.
Well, timeout. What's staff's view? Because we sat down the other day, the three of us, and we were told we should be asking the same questions. So is that not the correct?
From a pure legal standpoint, Fred is correct, but for uniformity, it makes sense to have questions so that you know, first of all, that you have questions to ask, because the last thing you want is a presentation where you don't ask anything, and then later on, you have buyer's remorse or alternatives. So from a legal, it's not a requirement, but it's good practice.
Okay. Arlene?
So when staff performs this function as a selection review committee, this is the process that we follow. We also look at the fact of legally... To make sure that when, sometimes in the past, different applicants have requested all the meeting notes and everything provided, which they can do to learn from, but we try to provide a uniform process for everybody.
With that being said, are we gonna grade these on Arubix? Are we... Do we get Arubix or anything like that, or is this...
You're gonna be able to form a general consensus and discussion amongst yourselves. There's no ranking points.
Okay.
And then, actually, today is the discussion. You'd still need to go forward to a regularly-held city council meeting to make your final selection, to begin the process of negotiating.
They can make... They can vote on who they select and then have a notice of intent to provide it.
It would be brought back in the...
So we don't wanna prioritize that the kind of firm that we're looking for is one that can deliver kind of a model project that distinguishes Benita Springs multi-use path from others. So our signature path. I thought that's where we were going.
Right.
So I think personally that that should be the priority of what we're trying to ferret out by this discussion. And that's why I'm not 100% sure our questions are getting at that. You know, I don't know what they're gonna provide. Maybe they're gonna provide, you know, pictures, and maybe as they talk about it, we'll get that kind of thing. And I...
Well, can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Peter, and then Fred.
The first one says, "What would you identify as three innovative features that are imperative to a successful and well-used path facility?" Or, like, the second from the bottom says, "Please illustrate concepts for enhancing aesthetic appeal while providing safe, secure, and functional facilities." I thought those kinda went toward what you said, and I agree with you. You know, is the goal? Or what do you think?
Well, they're a little bit too nebulous for me.
Nebulous.
You know, because, first of all, each job is gonna be constrained by what you start with, you know? So we're gonna start... Let's use West Terry Street, which is what we're gonna do first, right? Isn't... Did we agree to do that? So there's certain characteristics along West Terry Street, so they might be able to do something innovative there, and they might not, you know? So the innovation comes when you distribute that design through the entire system and you confront with problems that prevent you from executing the design. And then you have to get all your creativity together so that you can sort of accommodate what you're trying to accomplish. So I think it's hard. It's very difficult, but I agree about the top one. But even these three innovative features...
I'd like to add number three.
Yeah.
I think that's a key point.
Right.
For sure.
My question is, I know you're gonna go to Fred next, but my question is, okay, let's say we pick the top four. And those questions are answered in their PowerPoint or their presentation. Do we wanna deviate and then go ask more questions? You know, that's what I kinda...
Definitely.
A little bit agree with Fred, what he's saying is...
If time allows, yeah.
You know, the first... Like, the very first question, like you said, the first one and the next-to-last one are high-end questions that we wanna see in their presentation. Well, they're addressed in that presentation. So there's two questions right off the bat that maybe we don't need to ask, because it's already demonstrated.
Absolutely.
Well, I don't really have a view. I'm just trying to go by a process that staff laid out.
No, no, I understand that. I'm just saying, if, like, when we talked about, we're gonna pick four questions.
Right.
Well, three of those four are...
Well, what do you wanna do?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just saying. I've just... I guess my thought is that we gotta be a little bit more flexible than...
I'm here on flexibility.
Yeah.
We'll have some flexibility. Fred?
Well, I think that what Amy said is right. I think you could take a couple of these questions and tweak them a little bit and get it a little more to what makes you feel that you're uniquely qualified to provide...
Right.
Benita Springs with bike paths and walkways that are gonna separate us from the...
Yeah, I think number three is pretty good, because that's specific to Benita Springs. I'd rather not just have, like, some general thing, you know? Where we have that bike path that goes around in a circle, which it looks great, but we're the heck gonna put that in, you know, in Benita Springs?
Then my other point was that I think that maybe you pick two questions, and then we can come up with a follow-up on some of them. And then, lastly, and this is just a... I wanna leave you with this experience. When you're interviewing this many people, the way to do it, I would suggest... Because it's gonna be very subjective, you know? Amy will pick one, O'Flynn will pick one, Gibson, and we may not all agree, but the simplest way to do it, when you interview the first two firms, you say, "If the competition stopped then, which of the two won?" After you... And then, let's say, number two won that competition, and when you interview the third one, "Did two or three come out in your mind best?" If you do that as you go, it'll make it a lot simpler. The only two places in this that really count is the first place and the second place. Because the way it works is if Arlene, Carl, and Matt can't arrive at a fair and equitable fee with number one, the way the statute is, you break off negotiations and you go to two. And I don't think if you don't come up with a fair and equitable fee by number two, I think the best thing to do is start all over again, because you're going into diminishing returns.
Well, the key point is, who you honestly feel finished second, you don't vote for last, because you're really not your firm to win.
We vote for... We pick number one first. None of this...
Years passed. And Audrey?
And it's happened in another government that I worked with.
And it happened last cycle for us.
What they did is, they put number one, they had no intent to negotiate, because they wanted to go to number two, and...
Honest rankings, as I were asking.
I had explained they had to terminate... The statute requires actual termination of the negotiation, then you can proceed with the second person.
I'm wondering if, Amy, if you could restate what you said is the most important thing, because I think that would be...
I think having an organization...
What is your qualification? What... How'd you put it?
An organization that demonstrates that they can provide a product which distinguishes Benita Springs from other communities that are doing multi-path... Multi-use paths as a model, you know? I want people to look at whatever we do on West Terry Street and say, "Oh, my God, can you believe what they did in Benita Springs?"
It'll match the trees.
Yeah, exactly.
It's go time.
You know, I mean, I don't know... I don't know how creative you can be along West...
We're gonna blend this with Taj Mahal.
But that's just to start, because we're gonna do...
Can we suggest that as a question?
Yeah. But I think number three comes close to that, because they're using Benita Springs... I don't know if they really know... Do you think they've investigated Benita Springs? They should have, right? They... That's the... What?
What's that, Matt?
That's the antenna of...
I see.
That's the antenna of the question.
To see if they did their homework?
But maybe you could incorporate that concept to say, you know, like you've said, into that question, and then, really, you get a couple, three questions that are really, you know, several questions in one. And then if they address it in that presentation, you move on to, you know, whatever thoughts come to mind.
See, I would like to know how they handle problems, you know? If you have a blank slate in a street that doesn't have anything on it, they could put a pretty good path there. But I'd like to know, in the past, how they got into something where they ran into some constraint, size of, you know, road, or whatever you get into, or... And what they did about it in an innovative way, because that's what we're gonna be faced with in Benita Springs.
Where there's plenty of separation, and let's face it, plenty is subjective, but where it's very narrow to the road...
Yeah. And there might be some other things that we're not thinking about, that... They can use some outside example of where they ran into troubles.
So you think number three does that, more or less, or...
I think so, you know? And if they don't, a follow-up would be, "Well, can you explain to me what trouble you ran into, or constraints you ran into in another job, and what you did with it in a creative way?" I thought that might be good.
Might have to take down Matt Feeney's Jersey barrier on Terry Street, you never know.
Exactly.
Well, Matt, I got a quick question for Matt and Arlene, I guess, staff. And the ones I've conducted, you know, but basically they were construction, like building a station, or architects, or whatever. My understanding is, when this... This first one comes in, whoever it is, American Structure Point, their presentation should be on Terry Street, or what's going on in Benita, correct? Or am I missing a point here? Because the ones I've always been to is like, okay, we're gonna design a station. Here's what we have in mind for designing a fire station, or like. So, kinda going back to Amy and Peter's thing, their presentation should be on Terry Street, or they should be doing... Looking at all the problems and addressing, "Hey, here's some problems we see. Here's how we're gonna address them as a company." Am I off the mark, or is that usually not what happens? What does happen?
The scope specifically says, "Within the city of Benita Springs," so I think that's...
It's not as specific to Terry.
It's not a specific construction job.
I just know, okay, let's use the first one, American one. They address, one of the architects in here, or one of the design architects addresses about East Terry having 13 different canal points and getting with Southwest Florida Water Management. So I would hope that their presentation would address some of those problems they identified in their presentat... Or in their paperwork here. So that's what... I guess that's my question, is that we're looking for these questions, and like, question three, which is a very good question, I would hope it would be addressed in their presentation. That we wouldn't have to do it, because, all right, we can sit there and ask them, "Hey, what are you planning on doing?" "Well, we think we're gonna put a couple of bridges over here. We're gonna take down this landscape. We're gonna take down all those signs and all that urban clutter, as Councilman Forbes calls it, and we're gonna change it all up." But we've got no vision of it on a PowerPoint. Right. I mean, heck, I can draw it up on a bar napkin and tell you what it's gonna look like, but doesn't make it's gonna make it happen.
And that goes right to Fred's point. Last time, we need more pictures. We need to see it. We need video of it. We need, you know, aerials, whatever the case may be.
And what are we actually getting? Because the RFQ is for best-known practices and state-of-the-art techniques. We didn't actually ask them to design Terry, is the problem. Because we said that, you know, we can build a bike path, but we wanna see what the best techniques out there are. We wanna be world-class. We wanna know what all the new stuff is. So whoever we select, are they actually gonna design Terry Street for us, or are they just gonna be giving us, like, you know, this is different things that you can do?
A floating roundabout.
Yeah.
Bicycle roundabout.
Well, I think the notion was, we're hiring a consultant to work with staff, particularly Matt and Arlene, toward the end that Amy laid out generically for the city, with specific reference early on to Terry Street, because Terry Street is our top priority.
Correct.
And how it evolves, I think, remains to be determined. So that it may evolve into they're coming up with design specs against which contractors will bid. It may evolve into something else. Is that fair?
Correct. And we did leave the language open in the request, so that if council decided to go another step further with their assistance in design, that's possible. But that's not the... That's not guaranteed by them getting acceptance of this request.
This is not a guaranteed contract...
Correct.
...to do work in a city.
To do building.
It's to bring their expertise, as people who have been around the block, who have done all these things, who have run in, as we've talked about here, who have run into trouble situations or whatever, to staff.
It would be similar to the, like, a not-to-exceed contract that we have with John DePalma with McMahon and Associates, or the second contract we have with Ian, where he is on-call for us to review projects and give feedback to staff.
But did they mention Terry? Did you mention... We did... Is Terry mentioned, or... Because this is just to Greg's point.
No, it's not, I don't think.
Well, I guess they're aware of the fact that that's our top priority. It sounds like they've done their homework, and they're aware that's a priority.
So typically, what would occur is that these folks would be interested in getting acceptance of their proposal, so hopefully, they would listen to former workshops that we had on the subject, you know? Pay attention to past council meetings and look at our priorities. And then they would become here educated to be able to respond to those questions, so...
Thanks, Arlene. Matt? Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Pete, a second.
It's not specifically mentioned, but, and I think this point's been brought, but there is a capability, should council choose, if the guidance, you know, is accepted, to go into the design function. So it has both abilities within this RFQ, to not only have the high-level guidance, but if you chose to do so, and that experience was, you know, to your liking, then we do have the ability to move into that next step, which is just project design.
Thanks. Fred?
Well, I was gonna give you some experience from a person that's written proposals, as well as written RFPs, RFQs. Typically, firms that haven't got a lot of in-depth experience at this, but they really want the job, they're gonna come in and they're gonna get all kind of information for a project that they kinda know we wanna do, and they're gonna dazzle you with how much they know about that project. But this... But they may not have got a lot of experience. So you wanna be careful of... Because if this RFP wasn't specifically saying Terry Street and these other things, it really... I think I'm gonna be looking for the companies that have done the nicest bike paths and can tell me why they think they could bring a lot of their expertise to Benita and give us things that would be distinctive to Benita. I mean, that's just my point of view. That's...
Following up on that, I think that's a very good point, is one thing that I was... I'm not settled in my mind about is when they talk about the percentage of subcontractors. How relevant is that? Because sometimes these companies have very impressive credentials, but if the principals that did those kinds of things are not the ones that are gonna be on this project, you know, I think you have to be careful about... I don't know. What do you think? I mean, is the percentage that relevant, or is it dependent on what... How many outside contractors they have? Is that a criterion that we should be wary of, or what?
I think it's something that you should... With this RFQ, this is an RFQ that is trying to get to creativity and innovation, I think is a fair statement. And so it would be something you would wanna consider, because, you know, if you don't have the... If you have the creative firm, but not...
The creative pro...
Not the creative people, you probably don't get to the product that you were looking for. So it can be relevant, particularly along something like that, like this is. And other things, it maybe is not as much relevant, because you're trying to get to, you know, something different.
Okay.
Pete, did you have anything else?
Well, just toward Amy's point, and that's why I think number two is important. It may be obvious, they may say it, but one of the things I'm gonna be looking for is who's a key person, or person who could work best with Matt and Arlene. And I did put in that email, we previously discussed this on council, at the end, we are gonna ask for their opinion, staff's opinion. Because I do think of this as the form of this, like Matt or Arlene just said, how they work with DePalma, or how they work with Ian now as a consultant.
You're like another partnership.
Yeah. Yeah. But I was wondering if we should... Should we pick four questions or not?
Do we what?
Back to from whence we started.
Well, I mean, I just...
From whence we came.
I didn't hear your question, I'm sorry.
Should we pick four questions or not?
Yes.
How about five? Four and a half?
Well, I would... I just, for the sake of moving on...
I think we have three that we're pretty happy with.
For the sake of moving it along, because it's...
Yeah. And he says four, number two, right?
Number two, number three. What did we have else?
You had number one, right?
Number one?
Number one.
And number seven, correct?
Yes.
Which one is seven?
The one before the last.
I think we had one, three, and seven, right, Steve?
What would be wrong with taking two questions slightly tweaked, and then let... And then let's see what happens with the follow-up, because you'll probably have at least two follow...
We will be flexible, and we will make it happen. All right. Anybody else?
I wanna be the wild card, so...
The wild card? You get the wild card?
You want a wild card?
Process-wise, how are we gonna do that? It's gonna be four people that are gonna ask... One person's gonna ask one question, another person's gonna ask the other.
Arlene? Steve's asking, process-wise, how should we be doing that? Should one person ask all the questions? Should one... We share? I mean, what should we do?
You're more than welcome if the... If council... If any councilor has a particular interest in one, you might wanna say, "I'd like to take this one. I'd like to take that one." Or you could also have the mayor ask all of the questions.
How about we do it almost like, here's a wild card, Mikey, throwing it in. You know how we vote, and then it switches? What if we just kinda get called on in that order, to ask what you want? Well, I don't know.
Yeah, it's good.
If we're gonna keep the similar questions, it might as well just be one person.
It'll be fine. It'll be fine.
Have one person answer the questions.
Okay.
And if they don't... And if they don't answer the question the way we want it, then somebody can follow.
All right, Pete, you kick it off. When you get tired, let... Nudge me under the podium and...
All right. All right, group, what am I doing?
Asking all the questions.
Asking the questions.
You're asking all the questions.
You thought 'em up, you wrote 'em out, you get to ask 'em still.
No, I didn't. She did. What?
Well, let Arlene answer the questions.
Which questions?
I thought one, two, three, and seven.
Two, three, and seven.
All right.
Now, we could, after...
Cut me off.
The responses come forth, we can then go and say, "Oh, could you clarify that for me," or whatever.
Yeah. Okay.
Fred, you okay? With everything that my questions...
Yeah, I... We say we're gonna be flexible, but I...
As we wrap up questions.
I hear we keep coming back to... I still think...
What do you wanna do?
Let Pete do two questions, and then see if anybody's got a follow-up. If not, then he goes to the third and the fourth.
Is that all right?
Well, and like...
Does that sound good?
I like what Greg said. If they initially answer this in their presentation, then we obviously don't need to ask these questions.
We'll have to go off script.
You know?
Yeah. And that means that he may, instead of go from one to two, he may go to the fourth question or something.
All right, you keep me on my... I'd like Peter to be asking them on.
Steve wants you to ask all of them, Pete, but we're gonna... Greg, Amy, any closing thoughts?
No, we're good.
Okay.
So the applicant is here. They're in room 118. We can have them come in now, whenever you're ready.
Okay.
And the allotted time was, what, twenty minutes?
Twenty... They have 25 minutes for their presentation, and then they have 20 minutes for questions and answers.
Got you. Right. Good. And these forms, right, are for the public to fill? Gotcha. Right, good. And these forms, right, are for the public to fill?
For the public.
For the public, Rick, if you wanna form, Rick?
Well, that's if you'd like to speak.
You wanna say something?
Uh, we had public comment earlier.
We, uh, you missed public comment, Rick, but.
It's too late.
Here, Rick, take this one, I got one.
Take two, they're small.
Took the song, it killed twice.
See all that temptation?
Yeah, who's, who's tempting me with?
Did you hear that Harbaugh's recruit in the south now?
Banana, not the bread.
Arlene from Florida State's doing really good baseball.
I'll bring it to Bobby Shiloh's banana one.
Better get, put some away and wrap it in some, so it don't dry out.
Yeah, we're gonna be here all day. Michael, how are you?
Good.
How's everything going?
All right.
Thank you.
Arlene, the guy that won the US Open, I can't, or Co or something like that, he's a Florida State All-American. Was. Curious question, in season versus out of season, where do you get most of your business in season? In season?
Oh, yeah.
So summer's slow with, with, people don't go fishing that much or?
Uh, well, actually the bait shop picks up, well, in comparison to the bite shop.
Well, that's what I meant, the bait shop.
The bait shop is actually doing more business, you know, on a lot of days than the bite shop is. But in season, even the bait shop makes more money, so, you know, cause it's just, there's more people in there. But, uh, but every summer we usually do better than the previous summer because there's more women staying. But in the summer you still, oh, it's, it's not as, like, no, it's, it's, we, we always struggle to do layoffs to people. Because we pay out more payroll in the summer than we make, so.
Well, we got a problem there, true. Yeah, he renewed.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Didn't he find it yet?
Whitey went through all, couldn't find it.
No, no, I gave it to the girl at the thrift store.
Right.
She put it in an old envelope. I, I can even.
Martha got it. Yeah, took it to the other club.
He didn't find it.
That's a good one.
See what I get to get involved in, everything.
And it was locked up and so then I went to the thrift store.
Uh, we go in, in the park.
No.
We go in the park, yes. We went, we went, we went to the Christmas Eve service in the park this past year and have gone, basically, we've only missed a couple of Sundays since. It's getting hot now and the problem is there's still people there. I mean, a lot of people show up, so we sit in the benches in the back, in the park. And there's, but there's one bench that's in the sun. We've been getting there, let's normal time, but it's been filled.
Was it nine o'clock?
So people, yeah, uh, nine thirty, nine thirty.
What's the name of that?
Um, the Springs of Bonita.
Springs of Bonita.
And Russ Win.
Russ is a good guy.
He started Living Waters, is that right? Or he started?
He was in Living Waters and, uh, apparently.
And got divorced and the church excommunicated him, as you would say in the Catholic faith, because he got divorced. So he separated from that church and, I guess divorce is okay in the church, I go to my own park.
And then he, uh, then he came over to the First Baptist Church. And started Saturday night service.
Well, my, my initial thing, I had, uh, hmm, what's the, uh?
I think the most they had during season was six hundred people. But that's a pretty good crowd in the park, you know, for a service. I don't know what St. Leo's holds, but it's probably more than that. Yeah, what's that hold?
Oh.
Two thousand, does it?
St. Le, St. Leo's got, they got, they got, they get a lot of people in church there, right?
But now, when we're done, I'll give you mine.
Well, I was at St. Leo's unfortunately for that funeral.
Yeah, yeah. A page, a pace.
Yes. Okay, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you wanna start, Arlene? Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. My name is Ryan Hipshman, I'm with American Structure Point.
Excuse me, could you pick them up? There you go. And just tap it. We're good. Okay, thank you.
Sounds great. Good morning, my name is Ryan Hipshman.
Ryan, I'm sorry, pull it up a little bit more.
Gladly.
You can straighten it out.
Yeah, whatever you want, thanks, sorry about that. I can hear you and I'm loud, but, you know.
That sounds great. My name is Ryan Hipshman, I'm with American Structure Point, I'll be one of your project managers on this project.
Thanks, Ryan. Welcome. Sure, introduce your team. Who's here?
Oh, I'm introducing, okay, gladly. Um, so with me today is Rachel Swanson from American Structure Point.
Hello, Rachel.
She will be a co-project manager. Um, we also have Chris.
Hi, Chris.
From Chinmore. Um, Chris, I'm not gonna, you're gonna have to pronounce your own last name, I'm afraid I'll butcher it.
Bettencourt.
Bettencourt. Thank you. Um, we have Liz with Patel Green and Associates.
Hello, Liz.
And Brandon Gray with ESA Shada.
Welcome. Okay, Arlene, do you wanna kick us off here or?
Sure, well, we're beginning at, um, nine thirty-six AM and you have, um, you have a total of twenty-five minutes for your, for your presentation and then they'll be followed by twenty minutes of questions and answers.
Thank you. Thanks very much, thanks for having us out today. We're very excited to be here talking to you about this project, um, which obviously we'd love to team with you and partner with you to achieve. So today, as I mentioned, we have with us representatives from, uh, most of our key subs. Patel Green and Associates, Chinmore, and also ESA Shada. Uh, we're also represented in spirit by Janus Research, who's on our team for the cultural aspect. Um, FR Allman, who's on the team for lighting and, um, ITS design and, and survey requirements. And also Arena Engineering, who will be our geotech consultant for this project. So as we understand that the, the goal or objective of this project is to help you integrate your bike and pedestrian master plan, of which we see an image from up here on the screen. We'd like to help you identify your top priority projects out of this and, and, um, help you create a showcase project for the first project, from which we can really take elements and, and help you implement future projects that will come out of this plan. Um, along the way, we're gonna help you prioritize, um, come up with costs and, and figure out how to implement each of these projects. As I mentioned, we, we have a, a team of consultants that we've assembled to put together this project for you, to deliver for you. Um, with those listed here, uh, we, we've actually assembled, um, quite a few local subs who have tons and tons of Florida experience uh, to help us deliver some of the more Florida-specific aspects of this project, like wetlands, drainage, um, also the landscaping aspect of this. American Structure Point really will be the, the lead on this project. We will, uh, take the lead in all of these aspects, but we'll be looking for, um, key guidance and, and critical information from each one of our subs to make this happen and, and to produce for you. We also have a fair amount of Florida experience ourselves, um, myself with, with roughly ten years of Florida experience um, from a previous firm, so I'm no stranger to the area. First of all, um, I'd like to talk about, uh, one thing that I'm, I'm assuming is probably on a lot of your minds and that is why is Structure Point interested in this project? Well, there's really several reasons for that. First of all, we're, we're very interested in, in helping you achieve something along these lines, uh, with this project. We really are a multifaceted firm, uh, we're a complete A and E firm, um, so we bring to you all the services you could possibly need to implement a project of, of any type. Um, and with that, we feel like we're, we're uniquely skilled in being able to bring together all the different elements of these projects, um, and be able to produce something for you that's not only, um, cost-effective and, and easy to implement, but also something that is very context-sensitive for your corridors. Structure Point is a, kind of a medium-sized firm, we are roughly four hundred individuals. Um, with that, um, we are uniquely suited to, to really, uh, be able to provide you with any kind of design resources or, or resources of any kind that you would need to produce this project. Um, we offer you the capabilities to provide you with multiple teams to be able to do so, um, which could speed up implementation and, and the project schedule. Um, but with that, we're also small enough that we can provide you with the personal attention that you need. Uh, Rachel and I can be available at any time to, to be here and meet with you personally. Um, and of course, phone calls, go-to meetings and whatever's necessary to, um, keep you up to date on the project as we move forward. As I mentioned, um, our Florida experience, our, uh, sub consultants that we've teamed with, of course, are located, um, here in the state of Florida, they have quite a bit of local experience, uh, which is gonna be very valuable for this project. Structure Point, we, we bring to you the national experience, um, having worked on projects all over the country and being able to implement those. And, um, as I mentioned, uh, we also have several individuals, myself included, with a fair amount of Florida experience that's gonna come in and, it's gonna be very valuable as we move forward on this project. So as I mentioned, um, Rachel and I will be the co-project managers on this project for Structure Point. The reason for that is we both have a very unique set of skills, uh, both of which I feel are gonna be very critical for moving this project forward. Um, myself, I'm more focused on the design side of things, um, with traffic operations also. Um, I have ten years of experience working here in Florida, uh, implementing various projects and, and being able to incorporate and, and blend those multimodal aspects together, um, on various different projects, um, which we've also been able to do in, in other projects outside of the state of Florida too. I have multiple years of, of experience in managing projects and, um, I'm, I'm very eager to be here and be part of this, having lived and worked in Florida for, for many years in the past. Rachel, as I mentioned, is our, um, is my co-project manager on this. Uh, Rachel has a, also has a very unique background that she's gonna tell you a little bit about at the moment.
Great, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, again, my name's Rachel Swanson, um, and as Ryan mentioned, we'll be co-project managing this project. It's really to, to allow, um, yourselves and our team the flexibility to, to kind of react to how this project shapes out, whether it's one project or two projects or the implementation plan, um, really how that, how that unfolds. Um, like Ryan said, I have thirteen-plus years of experience as a landscape architect and, um, an AICP certified planner. Um, so I've worked on all ends of the spectrum from planning and, and land use plans down to, um, design guidelines and design for trails and, and multimodal facilities. Um, I've also worked with, um, specific clients on managing, um, a program or multiple projects at the same time, working to implement a, a specific strategic implementation plan. Um, and then I've also, again, uh, had, have the experience of working from the, the design development phase down to the implementation, um, stage of various projects. Um, so Ryan's gonna, he turned it over to me and I'm gonna turn it over to, um, our next sub. We're just gonna go through, um, to give you a little bit of background of what our, who our team is, to give you a little bit more background of what makes up each of the sub, um, roles and then who those people are. So we're gonna do a little bit of a round robin here real quick and then, um, we'll get into talking more about our approach.
Great, thanks.
Next up is Liz.
I am Liz Bartel. I am a professional engineer and certified floodplain manager with thirteen years of experience in drainage design in the state of Florida. I work for PGA, which is a small Florida-based firm with extensive experience in trail and sidewalk design. Right now, we don't, we currently hold the District One, uh, district-wide scenic enhancement contract and we also have several standalone sidewalk projects that are ongoing or recently completed. We've actually been able to, um, implement some really innovative solutions for some of those projects. Uh, one of the projects is a trail with a parking lot, um, that services the trail and we used brick pavers for the trail and pervious brick pavers for the parking lot to help us get our water quality requirements that we needed within the right-of-way. Uh, for that project, we also got cooperative funding from Southwest Florida Water Management District, something that I know that the city of Bonita Springs is familiar with, with South Florida Water Management District. Um, another example of an, in, of an innovative solution of what we've done is we had a sidewalk project where we wanted to avoid all the existing trees within the corridor. Uh, not only is that an environmentally responsible design, but it also helps, um, some negative public feedback that we could get if we were taking down the trees. Unfortunately, what that does is it leaves us not much room for stormwater, uh, needs. So we worked very closely with the Water Management District and provided partial compensating treatment on an adjacent side street. So it really shows how our relationship with the permitting agency can aid us in doing, um, getting our permitting done and using some, uh, solutions within the right-of-way. So PGA is also, uh, we have great relationships with DOT, especially District One in Southwest Florida. Uh, several of our staff members have served on the District One local agency program and we're very familiar with their procedures and could help the city, um, with any, with anything that we need to do in their LAP program. Uh, and with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Great, thank you.
Good morning. Um, I'm Chris Bettencourt with Chinmore and Associates. I'm a registered landscape architect with twenty-two years of experience in the state of Florida. Chinmore is celebrating its thirtieth year, uh, providing landscape architecture and civil engineering, uh, here in the state of Florida. We're headquartered in Fort Lauderdale. We work mostly with coastal communities, so we're really familiar with the unique environment that is coastal Florida. I myself am responsible for, uh, some recent bike trail program, uh, projects in Aviation Boulevard in Marathon, Florida, um, as well as working on a complete streets master plan for, uh, the city of Coral Springs. Working with the city of Miami Beach currently on Lincoln Road Master Plan as well as the design and implementation. So I work with a lot of communities that, um, bring a lot of tourists and have, uh, you know, a lot of, um, visibility, uh, both on the state level and the national level, but here in Florida. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brandon.
Thank you.
I'm Brandon Gray with ESA Shada, formerly, uh, Shada Ecological Associates. We recently were acquired by a firm called ES, Environmental Science Associates. So what we bring to the, uh, we, we, our firm primarily specializes, we're, uh, we'll be handling all the bugs and bunnies, if you guys would like to call it, um, for the, um, wetland issues and wildlife issues and that's kind of what we specialize and bring to the team. Um, we have a lot of, uh, DOT experience, particularly District One as well. Um, and we've done several projects in the past, you know, I guess transportation projects are very similar to trail projects, but, um, one thing we've, we specialized in is, uh, integrating, uh, trails with, uh, within the ecosystem to not, to cause the least amount of, uh, damage. Um, so, and these are a couple of examples that we had. We worked a project for TECO, the local, um, power supplier for Tampa Bay area, um, where they have a manatee viewing center. They did a whole series of boardwalks, uh, one crossing, uh, a natural creek and another one going across a salt turn, uh, community where they created a observation tower for, um, the, the people to, uh, go look at. It was basically a free facility for, for the public. Um, another innovative one was the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, uh, Phase Four, it's also in Tampa Bay area. Um, they used, uh, uh, concrete, uh, concrete boardwalk planks, uh, pre, precast as, as opposed to the traditional wood or pressure-treated, uh, woods, uh, be a more permanent solution for some of the wetland crossings. Um, and I think, yeah, and the only other thing to add is, uh, our firm specializes too. We do a lot of, um, uh, project development and environmental assessments for NEPA, um, for what, doing wetland and wildlife assessments. So with that, I'll pass it on to the next one.
Thank you.
So I'm just gonna quickly run through our other, our other partners with, which Ryan already stated and which was in the proposal and I think it's summarized on your, on the front page of your handout. Um, we've got FR Allman, um, which will be working with us on survey security, uh, and lighting. Um, they've got a lot of experience in Florida, uh, currently the designer of record, um, for the LED upgrades on the I-95 project. Um, and then they've also been recently selected as part of the, uh, the design build team for, uh, the truck parking availability system in District Five. Uh, another member of our team is Arena for Geotechnical Engineering. Um, this is definitely a, a component that we, we wanna make sure we have local experience on, which is where the, the geotech, um, engineering sub is in. Um, they definitely have, uh, experience with bicycle and pedestrian projects and complete streets projects. Um, and they have the, the, the in-house capabilities for some, for some technology and drilling as well. Another member of our team is Janus Research. Um, we're, we've been familiarizing ourselves with the Historic Resources Survey, um, of Bonita Springs. Um, so we know that they have more local knowledge of your historical, um, amenities within, uh, the community, but we really wanted to bring them in since they know that so well and to make sure that was, we're working through these projects, we're sensitive to all of those, um, assets. So, uh, now we're gonna transition from talking about our team to kind of digging into what our, um, our approach could be. Uh, we've, we've decided to take a look at your bike and pad master plan and select a project that we think is, is critical to implementation. Uh, so we've selected the segment of Terry Street, um, that goes from US forty-one to Old Forty-One. It's about one point eight miles. Um, so as we, we walk through, quickly, uh, walk through, um, a little bit more detail about what particular subs would be doing or what our approach would be, um, we're gonna start talking about some of the elements to consider. So, um, just to give you an idea that we understand what this project could include and the, the whole spectrum of what would be necessary to make sure that this project is designed and implemented correctly. So to start, uh, we definitely, uh, wanted to select a project to, to use as an example to select Terry Street. This is your image, um, an image from your bike and pad master plan. Um, and I, I think the segment of Terry Street, um, it, it gives you, it, it gives us, it gave us an idea um, as we walked through kind of a really quick exercise to figure out which segment connects a lot of things. Um, it provides your, provides you an east-west corridor, connects to some improvements on Old Forty-One. Um, it connects some commercial nodes, uh, provides access for school, library and pool, um, connects to some. It connects some commercial nodes, provides access for school, library and pool, connects to some neighborhoods. And then the crossing, or the cross-section of the road is pretty unique as well, given that the, there's a sidewalk a little bit farther out. There aren't sidewalks necessarily up against the road, but there's, there's a lot of opportunity there for this corridor. And then also, as part of the, the project, we understand that understanding who your users are, users are, are important. I will say that in looking at your Bike and Ped Master Plan, it was great to see that you're interested in improving health, mobility, environmental conditions and economic conditions as well. And I think with all of our experience on some of these projects, we, we definitely see the benefits of these facilities, improving a lot of those areas of your community. And then we also want to make sure that you're providing these facilities for people for fun and for transportation as well as finding amenities and a facility that serves people that are maybe a little bit more on the novice end to some people that are more on the, on the experienced or professional end in terms of using it for transportation. And then also accommodating people who are both young and old. So I'm going to turn it over to Ryan.
Great, thanks.
So safety is a key aspect of any trail facility that you're going to want to construct. Safety is probably of utmost importance here in front of your middle school, where we know you have really high volumes of pedestrians, both in before and after-school hours. Some of the ways we might want to accomplish that is by looking at an extra-wide trail to not only encourage students to stay on the trail and keep them safe to handle those large volumes, but also by looking at replacing some of these crosswalks that you have in front of the school with, with raised crosswalks to help emphasize the importance of the crosswalk, slow traffic and potentially even roundabouts out here as a, as a safety and, and a traffic calming measure. Security is another big aspect that kind of ties in with safety. Roadway lighting obviously is an easy way to achieve that and we will help you evaluate that and determine how best to do so, whether it's with some kind of joint-use lighting along the corridors or maybe it's even something more context-sensitive with specific trail lighting. Security cameras are definitely an option that could be used out here if you have areas with high crime areas, for instance. Hopefully you don't, but we could implement those in a very cost-effective manner by, by using some kind of a wireless network to do so. Trail counters could also be a big benefit because we could use these security cameras to also count volumes on these trails and help you justify your investment in the trails. Trail markers, like the one you see here in the upper right, are also a very cheap method to provide some safety and security along the corridor. So not only does this let you know how far you've traveled along the corridor, but it also gives those who are in need of aid, an easy way to relay their information quickly and effectively to EMS and/or police so that they can minimize the response times. Context sensitivity is another big element.
So obviously we want to design in harmony with the community and, and look to protect and preserve all of your resources, whether they be historic or aesthetic. And we do that by spending a lot of time here and really analyzing the site and being careful to, to understand how people use, will be using the trail. So we ourselves will ride and walk and meet with your community and, and understand what's important to you. We're also going to take the time to respect your, your historic properties. We know that there's a lot of history here in Bonita Springs and we want to be sensitive to that and make sure that the, the solutions that, that we come into developing for the, the items that bring a unique identity to Bonita Springs in, in, in terms of wayfinding and historic signage, canopies and benches, the site furnishings that we use, that they really respect the community and are part of the community, that they're easily maintained, that they're manageable and really, you know, work with, with, with the city to, to make sure that we come up with a, with a project that has a signature look. So that when you're coming in from out of town and you're in Bonita Springs, you definitely know that you're in Bonita Springs and the design reflects your community.
Thank you.
Okay, so most trails or sidewalks go in adjacent to roadways, which also happens to be where most stormwater treatment and stormwater management is taking place. So Terry Street has onsite and offsite stormwater ponds. They have open and closed drainage systems and there are several culverts and cross drains located within the corridor. So I'm going to briefly take you through our general approach to sidewalk design and also some Terry Street specifics. So in general, what we do is we first identify any impacts to stormwater management facilities. Typically, that's going to be a linear pond that's adjacent to the roadway and determine how we're going to compensate for that. We also look to maintain the onsite conveyance. So typically that's regrading a ditch to provide the same amount of volume in the new ditch that was in the existing ditch or modifying the existing storm sewer system if necessary. And then we also try to avoid any culvert extensions as they can be really costly. So trails are exempt from permitting as long as we don't impact any wetlands. However, we will have to modify existing permits if we impact any of their existing stormwater management facilities or if there's any unavoidable floodplain impacts. So PGA has really great relationships with South Florida Water Management District and it helps us to obtain our permits and deliver our projects on schedule. So taking a look at Terry Street in specific, I pulled all of the permits from the Water Management District for Terry Street and identified kind of the biggest challenge that I anticipated within those permits and then some potential solutions. But for the sake of time, I'm only going to take you through a couple. So at Old US 41, there's a lot of floodplains in that area. So we'll probably have some unavoidable floodplain impacts. But the good thing is, is that there's two existing offsite stormwater ponds that service that area that were oversized. They were actually designed, permitted and constructed for a five-lane roadway, but we only ended up building a four-lane roadway. We didn't build the center turn lane. So there's available storage volume within those ponds that we can use and then we don't need additional right-of-way. Another example is on East Terry Street, there is a ditch that was already converted to a storm sewer system and this area has also experienced historic flooding. So we will make sure that we provide adequate cover between the existing storm sewer pipe and the trail. And then also, even though it's exempt from permitting, we'll be very careful and sensitive in our design to make sure that the added impervious from the trail doesn't cause any adverse impacts.
Great, thank you.
I'm just going to touch briefly on the wetland and environmental side of things. For the segment of Terry Road that we're looking at, there's basically no wetlands along that corridor. There are some surface waters, however, our team will work closely to try to avoid and minimize those impacts. We have mitigation banks in the, in the area and one thing that we'll have to be looking for is wood storks, wood stork for foraging habitat and their suitable foraging habitat. However, we feel that those impacts could be de minimis for this, these type, this type of a project. As we move further east on Terry Street, obviously we move into more natural areas once we get out of the urban side of things. But we feel that, like, like Liz mentioned, it should be exempt from permitting for the initial segment. Our, our team also has five authorized gophorous agents and we're ready to handle any environmental issues that come up.
Thanks.
So geotechnical obviously is a big concern on the project. Arena has given us a couple of key elements that we need to consider as we move forward in this project, which we will do so. Utilities are also a big element that we need to consider.
I just, two minutes left. I just, two-minute warning.
Thank you very much.
Just like in the NFL, how's that? TV timeout, you have two minutes left. And the Patriots have the ball in the red zone and are ahead, so we hope.
So utilities within the corridor, you know, we, we obviously need to be cognizant of which utilities are within utility easements. Because if we impact those and need to relocate those, those are costs that the city is going to have to bear. Right-of-way, the easiest way to minimize your right-of-way impacts, of course, is to stay within the right-of-way. That's going to be very challenging on this segment. The next easiest solution to that is to minimize the amount of parcels that you're going to impact. And the way we are proposing to do that is, is, is really to put the trail on the north side of Terry Street for this segment of Terry Street, as you see here. So the, the idea or the concept that we've come up with and would like to fine-tune as we move forward on this project is really maintaining that existing sidewalk for pedestrians, implementing a multi-use trail then for, for pedestrians, for low-speed bicyclists, sorry, low-speed cyclists, you know, other types of users that are low-speed, repurposing the existing travel lanes a little bit, shrinking those lanes to really create some traffic calming and, and by doing so, widening the shoulders there and therefore allowing more room for on-speed, high-speed cyclists on your shoulders. So this is just one of the concepts that we've come up with for the corridor. As I passed over this a second ago, you know, obviously we know there are a multitude of different options and we will help you explore these as we move forward in the project. Transitions, of course, are a big aspect and a big concern as they tie in closely with safety. So there, there are several different ways we can approach this, you know, on-street, off-street. How do you accommodate bicyclists, especially as you approach the roundabouts? As, as you see, this is of course totally conceptual on the, on the far right side. How do we accommodate those through the roundabouts? Structure Point is very uniquely qualified to help you get through obstacles like this as we move forward. We'd also love to help you come up with an implementation plan to take all of these projects, really help you figure out how to prioritize them, how are you going to fund them, how quickly you want to implement them and then move forward and, and also determine who's your, your champion or really your responsible party, not only within the city, but maybe also at a state agency that we'd want to work with to help move these projects forward. So hopefully, in everything that we've covered very, very quickly today, we've explained to you why we feel we are the best team for this project and why we would really like to work with you. You know, as, as we mentioned, we, Structure Point are really the national firm that's coming in at the moment. We're, we're midsize, we're very agile and being able to adapt your needs, provide you with the personal attention you need to get through this. We've teamed up with a lot of great local subs who, who bring that Florida knowledge and are going to help us implement and give you what you need for this project. So with that, we stand ready to answer any questions. And as you, you see on the handouts that we provided, our, our contact info is, is on that.
Right.
Feel free to contact us at any time.
Wonderful, great job. Everybody, welcome. Deputy Mayor Flynn, do you want to kick us off?
Yeah, I've been selected as a designated reader for standard questions.
He wrote most of them.
So the notion is we'd go through two and then ask council for specific follow-up questions. And these questions are really geared toward what's kind of upfront in this, which in the RFP, where we're looking for state-of-the-art design techniques to provide a showcase multi-use pathway. So that people say, wow, you know, Bonita Springs is a leader not just in here, but in Florida generally with respect to what we're doing. So the first question we have is, what would you think of as three, could be two, could be four, could be whatever, innovative features that are imperative to a successful and well-used pathway facility? This is from a design perspective.
Sure, from a design perspective. Well, I'm, I'm going to start off with this and, and allow my team a chance to chime in on. But really, it's, it's about creating a, creating an environment or facility that is not only safe and effective as a mode of transportation, but also is, you know, fun and welcoming for motorists to come, or pedestrians, cyclists, not motorists, to utilize as they're traversing through the city, you know, between your destinations, which is why we stress connectivity and really helping you prioritize those projects. So what I'd like to highlight here is, is this project that we have multiple photos from. This is a project that Structure Point and myself specifically had just completed in South Bend, Indiana, where we took two arterials, two, three and four-lane arterials, really repurposed those and created on-street and off-street cycle tracks on each, each one of those facilities. You know, we're looking at very innovative solutions here for not only pavement markings on the, on the facilities, but also on the cycle tracks, you know, making it very appealing to motor, to cyclists so that they want to use it, so to keep them safe. And also incorporating a lot of landscaping elements to really create that warm feeling, you know, entice people to want to be there, to want to travel throughout the facility. And adding amenities like the, the water fountain, there's also bike racks, benches throughout the facilities, things along those lines to, to be able to accommodate all needs as, as you're traveling, traveling along these facilities. Rachel, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Looks like Ann Arbor to me. We'll settle that and move along.
I would just add that we'd probably look at things that are unique to your community and develop something like maybe a historic trail that runs and ties your community together. Maybe we can incorporate some art elements along the trails that tell the story of Bonita Springs. Things that really resonate with your community so that they're different from the other ones in Florida. Because, you know, it is, you know, Florida has a lot of communities with different trails. Like I know I did one in Wellington that is really tied to the equestrian community. That's their identity. So I think really understanding what's important to the residents here, what's unique about Bonita Springs, we can incorporate a lot of signage elements, wayfinding elements. And even looking at like some of the intersections, we can work with different pavement treatments to, to create a story as you travel from point to point and really create unique opportunities in different sections of the city that, that tell the story of Bonita Springs and really identify it visually, graphically, so it's very recognizable.
Second one is, and you touched on some of this in your presentation, but what are the unique challenges you anticipate would directly impact multimodal path design and implementation within the city? What are some of your initial ideas on addressing these channel, challenges? What past experiences has your firm overcome that are similar to these same challenges? This is about challenges that are specific that you noticed.
Sure. So what, you know, obviously there's a multitude of challenges that we're going to face. Drainage, which Liz talked about a little bit. You know, you've got a lot of open drainage, especially along this segment of Terry Street that we, we're focusing on here today. And how do we incorporate that without having to pipe the whole corridor, which obviously is going to be very expensive? So Liz has some solutions for that, you know. If you want to, yeah, you're welcome. No, no, come on up, come on up.
Exactly. I think I touched on some of the issues that are going to be maintaining the drainage within the existing right-of-way. And there is one instance, when I pulled all the permits, there is one location where the, because the interchange had, or the intersection had experienced historic flooding, they have already gone through and dropped the bottom of the ditches to be one foot above the seasonal high, which is the lowest it can go, and they've already been widened to four-foot bottoms. And in this case, it's going to be very difficult because we can't simply add additional storage to that ditch when we put the trail in because it's already been maximized. And so that would be one of the biggest challenges I would foresee for drainage. But like I said, we have worked with the Water Management Districts to look at providing compensating treatment on side streets or looking at anything that we can do. I'm familiar with certain outfall structures that we might be able to use, like a thirsty duck structure that would help get the water quality and water quantity volume that we need onsite without having to go offsite. So those are just a couple of things that we would look into doing in some of those really tight corridor situations for drainage and permitting.
Thank you.
And then, you know, pathway transitions, which we touched on briefly. So those are obviously critical to, to safety. You know, we, we don't want to just dump the trail out at an intersection and, and try to figure out how to address that. So one of the potential solutions, if you, if you look here on the right on this image of the roundabout, what we're proposing in this area, we've got sidewalk, you've got the multi-use trail and you also have cyclists who are traveling along the sidewalk here on the, on the roundabout. Because we don't want high-speed motors traveling through the roundabout as vehicles. So ideally, as they come up, they would exit the roadway or exit the shoulder, travel along this, cross at the crosswalks is really the safest place for cyclists. So in this case, in this northwest corner, you see sort of a trailhead here for the, for the trail. This is kind of our first shot at the solution in this area. Really create kind of a no-man's land so that no one feels like they really have the priority or the right-of-way there in, in terms of, you know, cyclists, pedestrians and, and, you know, children who might be walking out here. Kind of create a no-man's land so that everybody sort of feels like they have the equal amount of right-of-way and, and can blend and, and traverse from there.
Where is that on that?
So this would actually be, this is the community pool.
Right.
This is Pine Street, Terry Street. So the roundabout obviously may not be part of this actual trail project. But from what we've learned of the corridor, we, we think this could be a, a great location for a roundabout and implementation in the future.
Thank you. Do you want to go to council?
Council, sure. Council? Anybody want to jump in here? Fred?
My, my question is this, you've, I think you've got a prime and seven subs, something like that?
Yeah, I, the exact number, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head without counting, but yes, we have several subs.
My question is, generally on projects like this, have you worked with this many subs on this size project? At this, at this conceptual design stage?
Well, I think that's very important on this project, honestly. You know, there, there are a lot of different elements that we need to blend together. And, and by bringing on our subs with, with the local experience that they have, I, I think that's going to be really key to moving this forward. You know, that's, that's something obviously that a national firm coming in without a lot of local sub support, it would be lacking. You know, that's something obviously that a national firm coming in without a lot of local sub support, it would be lacking. We felt like we would be missing key elements if we did not include these individuals to help us navigate through those challenges. And kind of to go back to your original question, yes, we have gone through other projects, we have multiple subs. It is highly feasible, we certainly will make it work.
Mike?
Well, this being our first trail, I mean, we're really looking for a wow factor on this. So I mean, what examples can you give us that we can really make this look world-class?
Sure. Chris, would you like to come up and talk a little bit about?
Sure, so, right now, we're the designers for Lincoln Road in Miami. It gets something like thirty or forty million visitors a year. We just created the, we've just started the pedestrianization of new areas of the mall. It's the oldest pedestrian mall in the country, and, you know, we're the chosen designers on that. We've been working with the city of Coral Springs to create a downtown, which they didn't really have before. Their city hall was the sales center for the community when it was developed fifty years ago. We created a master plan for the downtown, we implemented. So like a really great project that we did with the city of Coral Springs is the Coral Springs Art Walk. And it was a Sunshine Drainage Water Control District canal. And what we did was we culverted the canal, at a cost of $2 million. And then we spent another $2 million on top of it and created a community center. It's a pedestrian area where the city has, you know, green markets, festivals, they have, you know, created spaces for art. They changed the sculptures, like every three or four months, you know, the city, they really, they really like to show themselves as being like very culturally advanced. And so they'll put out a call for artists, they'll bring in a couple of pieces, change up how the art walk looks, have another festival, bring people through, and decide which pieces they want to buy for the city. And then they'll move them to other locations throughout the city to, you know, create different, unique environments around the city. We also work with the city of Fort Lauderdale. We're in West Palm Beach. So we work with a lot of cities that prize their identity. And, you know, we work with the Keys, we work Key West. So we can create the right solution for you, I'm very confident of that.
Piggyback on that just a little bit. So the project here in South Bend that I highlighted, that really, the city of South Bend really looks at that as their signature project. It's not just a project that's kind of repurposing the streets, but it's also intended to help revitalize the whole downtown area, which they're already seeing. The project was just, it actually hasn't officially reached completion, but they've already received an additional $80 million in commitments and investments within the city. And they're looking at somewhere around $230 million worth of investments that they're expecting to be committed within the next couple of years. That's just one of the so-called signature projects that Structure Point's really been involved with. I think I skipped over this earlier. So Structure Point really, we've prided ourselves in really working with the community and helping you come up with your signature look, so to speak. You know, a project that you really can be proud of and build other projects off of in the future. So what you see here is just three of the projects that we would really consider signature projects that we've done in other areas. So Range Line Road on the far right, unfortunately, you can't quite see the detail, but really this was taking a four-lane arterial, repurposing it, creating a multi-use trail along it. We've got an on-street cycle track. And really creating a, you know, an environment that's very welcoming for multimodal travel throughout the corridor. The city is also considering this one of their signature projects. Oddly enough, the city, I'd say, also has another key signature project, which I think is one of ours, Keystone Parkway Corridor. Here, you see with the roundabout interchange is. Obviously, this is not a roundabout interchange project, but I think it just stresses to the emphasis that we put on really working with the community to help you come up with what you feel is best, being able to highlight your key elements of what you think sets Benita Springs apart from other communities.
Okay, thanks. Mike, we'll go over to Steve.
Yep, I'm good.
You're good, Greg?
I guess my only question is, you talked about, late into the game, you talked about prior, helping us prioritize. In your opinion, is it, you seem like you guys did a lot of review and research. Is Terry Street a good project?
We think it is.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, we think, you know, based on the elements that we touched on at the beginning, you know, safety, connectivity. I have to go back to the original slide to actually see what those were. There are several different elements that we really looked at and weighed as we kind of sifted through your map from the bike and ped master plan. So with these four elements, connectivity, safer route to school, which obviously we have a school along the corridor, constructability, which we think is, the potential for constructability is really high on this corridor. And also, you know, can it be done cost-feasibly? And this trail, because we think we could do it without having to do any major modifications to the roadway or major right-of-way impacts along there, we think this project is very high on standpoint of cost feasibility. So that's why we felt like this was one of the early projects that you'd probably want to consider.
Then my other, I guess, follow-up is with yourself and I think it was Rachel, and I forget who the other one was. Steve, all three of you guys are out of the Indianapolis area, is that going to be a problem with you guys being the project heads?
No, no, no project, no problem at all. We, you know, we're very available for you at any time you need to be. More than willing to come down and meet with you in person at any point in time. We can be here on very short notice. We also, myself included, myself specifically, and I think Rachel included, you know, we work on projects really all across the country. I also have a project in Virginia right now that I'm working on. Pretty key in that project, and obviously, so being located in Indianapolis, it's not much different than being located in Indy and working on a Florida project. So I don't feel like that's a problem at all on this.
Thanks, Greg, Amy?
When you prioritize the projects, when you have, when you were involved with the entire city, where does cost come in? Are you helpful in assessing grant-making and/or other funding, besides just the city providing their own funding?
Oh, absolutely. You know, so, here it is. You know, so as we threw out this example here, which Rachel actually produced as part of a comp plan that she had been instrumental in, you know, cost obviously is a key component of this, because if you've got a great facility that you know meets all of these four criteria that we talked about earlier, but the cost is astronomical, well, that's a huge challenge. So we can certainly help you work through, find the different multiple funding sources. Your bike and master plan actually did a good job of kind of the preliminary identification of a half a dozen or so of those that are available. We can help you figure out which one of those would really be applicable to each trail. And in the best-case scenario, maybe there's multiple of those sources that are applicable to each facility. Personally, I am working on an interchange project in Cincinnati, Ohio at the moment. Thirteen and a half million dollar project. The city really needs to implement it, really wants to implement it, but they obviously didn't have thirteen and a half million dollars. So what we were able to do is take a look at that project and break it down on different components. So the traffic congestion components, safety components, and we were able to use four different funding sources on that project. So four different federal funding sources. To be able to blend those funds, and I think we came up with like thirteen, sorry, 11.7 million of the thirteen and a half million dollars that the city needs to build the project. And we've actually, we helped them put together applications and be awarded that funding. And that project's moving forward here in the next couple of years. So that's an experience that I'd like to lend to you and help implement these trails.
Thanks. And I'll jump in here, could you go back to the slide, please, where the trail gets real narrow and close to the street? Yes, yes, that is. So can you walk us through where, obviously, walk us, actually, right where the boxes are on that side of the, from the yellow line over?
Sure, sure. So the concept here is, of course, to keep the existing sidewalk for, and use that for, primarily for pedestrian use. We've got the new multi-use trail that we are proposing to construct along the north side of Terry Street to minimize right-of-way impacts. The reason for the trail offset varying throughout here is really to avoid these utilities. They're a little hard to see because they've been masked somewhat by the proposed elements. But by shifting that offset, we're able to avoid some of these utilities as we're going throughout the corridor, which of course is going to be a cost savings for you.
Right. All right, can you walk me through the distances between the white line and the bike trail and the grass?
Sure, sure. So this offset in here, that is actually per the Florida Green Book. And I'm kind of shooting from the hip at the moment. I think that's somewhere in the vicinity of five or six feet is the minimum offset in that area. Obviously, I don't have the manual in front of me. And then as we move farther away, I want to say that this offset is more in the vicinity of, maybe somewhere in the order of fourteen feet in separation between the edge of the shoulder and the proposed trail.
So you're saying because of the utilities that's been masked, we could not push the sidewalk any further towards the green space there, the greenery?
No, your sidewalk certainly could be pushed closer, closer to the trail, if that's something.
Further away from the street is really my bottom line.
Sure.
It seems pretty tight through there.
Through here? It is a little tight, I can assure you that, you know, what we're proposing here actually meets the standards, minimum standards, mind you. But it can be done. So this section of the trail certainly could be moved farther to the north, closer to the sidewalk. The trade-off there is you're going to have more utility impacts from what we've been able to see at the moment. So our goal in kind of coming up with this concept is provide you with an idea of how the corridor could look. And in that idea, we want to make sure that we address each one of these multimodal modes that we've got listed up here. And also provide you with what we think is really the lowest-cost solution for the corridor in terms of the actual infrastructure that we're producing.
In my mind, that's a spot that probably cost shouldn't be a factor, but...
And we're happy to help you work through that and figure that out as we go forward.
Great, great, yes, that's time. Arlene, I'm sorry.
Time.
Time, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Take care. Go blue. Hearing all this, so in Cincinnati, Fred, they can't come up with 12 million?
They sold the Bengals to get it.
Union must be running Cincinnati, Fred.
They have to borrow from Kentucky.
Yes, absolutely. Let's take it.
Thank you very much.
About when Drew Brees was a quarterback for Purdue in like 98, I want to say it was 98. And they came to the big house, standing in armor. And it was Tom Brady, Drew Brees shootout, 41. Michigan won, 41-38, but it was unbelievable. Drew Brees was trying to win that, believe me.
Yeah, no, I'm from New Hampshire, but I took a six-month job in Ann Arbor in 1996 and spent fifteen years before we moved down here. Married an Ann Arbor girl. Fifth-generation German. You know where I'm coming from now, right?
I heard you mention Ann Arbor.
When her relatives came over, the German schools, the whole bit, they taught, they had to teach themselves English. Go ahead, guys, no, I don't want to monopolize, Greg. Greg, I don't want to monopolize.
No, I just wanted to say, thank you. Thanks very much.
You went through all this.
Thanks very much.
It's all your presenting.
That is, yes, this is what we submitted for the CrossFit RFP. Thank you.
Yeah, Terry Street with the school there is the biggest problem.
It is.
I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to look at it. I just did a basic one, Arlene. Okay, yeah.
It's exciting. We do. I agree. Oh, you know, you get to the local source. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll try to grab it. People find us. And when you see where we're in eighth, that's when it's really confusing. So we got 54,000. I haven't seen you in a week, sir.
It's Wednesday.
Are you going to be around the room? Jose? Jose? Let me give you... That's the same one.
Thanks, Fred.
I had to have a blood drawn this morning, fasting.
We're going to get some food in you.
Yeah, I'm trying to get some.
It's going to be a long day.
Yeah, I know. They were really interesting.
Yeah.
You know, it's so much different from just reading the presentation.
Yeah, very much so.
These guys are with McMahon and Associates.
Looks like it, yeah. Their subsidiary or...
Hey, Bob. Bob Hillier. Yeah, this is Rick Steinmeyer, can you hear me all right? I got some friends here if he wants to speak with you.
Well, good. Oh, no, 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 no. How that's, that's. Oh, you found it, Chuck. Good. Wouldn't you forget to turn it in? Here, I'll let you tell, tell Steinmeyer, I heard she pleased you a lot.
Okay, what happened? You found it?
Actually, I thought he was in here with you guys, but he's not back yet, so. So you got another interview. How's it, what are you doing?
Good.
He's, uh. Is he gonna, he taking you to make your career?
Why, yesterday?
I don't know. He, he re-upped for one year. Well, extended it in re-upped it.
Okay.
Because I, I guess.
I'm glad it's fixed. Thank you so much. Let's see, is he at five o'clock? Uh, Phil, Phil, listen, I think they'll make it tonight.
But in one-year increments.
He's got a little angle. He's got an office up on Orlando. He'll be up there this, this week.
He approached me. But in his, he's not, he wants to do his career enough.
All right. Thanks, Bob.
Wants to strive to pass the test, or he wants to not pass it because then, you know, if you're not at least seven hundred by the time you play it. Then they give you a bonus. So, you know, it's like, I might say, you know, so he's like, kind of weighing that option. Do I want to stay and make a career, or do I just want to, you know, get that? Mike Wither thinks what he want to do, he wasn't going to stay there. That's the, the big thing we're trying to get them to figure out. And, and because all he's in there, he'd be doing taking classes and stuff now. You know, he can hit you. He's like, I want to do that one, get out of there. However, it's really pretty much basically now getting like all the. While you're in there, so it's, uh, that's what we're trying to get to. Well, there's also the Air Force Reserve.
Being late means, I think, my time's more important than yours. Actually, don't believe.
I remember when I'm late six, eight years.
Okay, we're all here. Welcome. Arlene?
You have your next firm in front of you. The time is ten thirty-four, so ask them to come forward and introduce themselves. They have twenty-five minutes for their presentation and then twenty minutes for questions and answers.
Wonderful. Thank you. Hello.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's John DePalma. I think you folks have seen me a number of times. I'm on the Sprinkle team, and I'm very excited today to present to you the Sprinkle team. They're going to be presenting on the multi-use pathways for Benita Springs. And as one of your criteria stipulated, you wanted national experience. Well, Sprinkle today will demonstrate to you their national experience as well as their international experience. And you can see by the number of green dots in, in Florida, they have a number of projects in Florida that could be translated into projects for Benita Springs. And as a matter of fact, our firm's working with them right now in the city of West Palm Beach. So it's with great pleasure that I'd like to introduce to you today Bruce Landis, professional engineer and planner. He will discuss the expertise that the Sprinkle consulting team has with regard to engineering, planning, and operations. And Bruce has a number of accolades himself. So it gives me great pleasure to introduce Bruce Landis to, to the council.
Thank you, John. Good morning, members of the council. What we thought we'd do is outline some of our team's distinctives as relates to your selection criteria from your RFP. And just for fun, we kind of reversed order of that selection criteria. What we'd like to do is highlight our ability to coordinate the work and to build upon the work that's already underway, physically underway here in your city. And then also what's underway in terms of policy and plans. And so we're very familiar with the outcome of the Northeast Quadrant Plan, your complete street policy and the guidelines and, and the aspirations articulated there, the Benita Beach Visioning Study. And of course, the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan led by McMahon Associates and, and their staff. We're also familiar with Lee County MPO and, and what they have identified in the, in their LRTP and their TIP. And importantly, as we'll highlight later, what's also underway in the Florida Sun Trails Program and what that's going to mean to you and the other communities in Southwest Florida. We're very excited about this opportunity to help you achieve your goals and objectives in creating a bicycle-friendly and a, and a very healthy and active, sustainable community. Listed in your RFP are four goals or objectives that you envision your multi-use pathway system to help serve. And what we want to do is highlight a little bit of how we've helped other communities throughout Florida and throughout the United States achieve those. Safe routes to school, for example. Our engineering task manager on our team, Theo Petrich, shown at the bottom there, was Florida's statewide bicycle and pedestrian coordinator for a number of years. He and our staff are currently working with a number of states and developing their educational programs for their students, their middle school and elementary school students on safe routes to school. We develop school crossing guard training programs for state DOTs. We also enable cities and counties throughout Florida to develop their safe routes to school sidewalk program. For example, we helped Hillsborough County with their sixty-million-dollar program a few years back. And we do a number of bicycle pedestrian safety action plan and safety audits. We're starting one for Pope County even as we speak. We also have a good bit of experience helping other communities connect their recreational opportunities and points of interest. Primarily, the, the central areas. We know you've got a, a jewel in the Depot Park. And we're real excited about helping you with that. We have a lot of experience helping other parks, departments, and organizations such as the National Park Service in expanding their bikeway system in Arcadia National Park through training, facility design training. We're the National Highway Institute curriculum developers for pathway design for practitioners across the country. We helped Arizona develop their statewide bicycle accommodation plan, which, you know, ties into premier natural environments like the Grand Canyon. We helped Pennsylvania develop their statewide greenways plan and also helping a number of upstate New York small towns connect to the Erie Canalway. Something a little bit closer to home, want to highlight, this is St. Petersburg's Pinellas Trail Extension and the redevelopment of their historic train depot on their, on their west side of town. As you can see on the slides on the left, we, we helped the staff convert that rail, an active rail, which was running one or two trains a year into the Pinellas Trail Extension and helped redevelop the train, the historic train station to where it's a great community resource for crafts and in particular, the Morian Clay Activity Center for the entire community. Booker Creek Parkway Design is another example. This one from St. Petersburg as well. This is historic Booker Creek Community where they have a lot of brick streets, a lot of iconic hardscape and streetscape features from the early nineteen hundreds. We work very closely with the city staff to develop plans in a way that, that introduced a regional, their, their regional trailway system through that community in a very harmonious way. Finally, want to highlight how we can help you with develop efficient plans and low-cost construction for your multi-use pathways. There's four things we'd like to highlight for you this morning briefly. Our key staff have complete experience in the entire array of concept, design, engineering, construction, and operations. Whether it's developing alternatives, cross-sectional types for different functioning flows such as separated bikeways or cycle tracks in downtown areas, we have all that experience. We have, are, are the same key staff that will be serving you on this contract have experience with construction administration and in trail operation and maintenance. Our engineering task manager, Theo Petrich, who I mentioned earlier, his work in designing and developing geometric designs that are, that are operationally reliable, you'll see his name in the back of the chapters of many of these national design documents that guide design throughout Florida and the United States. And, and in fact, his and my work is mentioned in the Model Design Manual for Living Streets, which is highlighted in your very own Complete Streets Manual as well. A third area I want to highlight in developing efficient designs and low-cost construction is, believe it or not, early partnership and co-authorship of construction plans. What our clients have found, that as you see on the left, early meetings and listening with homeowner association boards, condominium association boards, property managers, really goes a long way. Before you put a single line on the map or on, on a set of plans, goes a long way to building partnership and, and making sure that, that everyone's on board. Meeting with other agency partners such as counties, yes, DOT districts, water management districts, utility operators, all goes a long way towards that co-authorship in the design. So that at the end, you have property owners, business owners, and, and the community leadership being confident that those construction plans can move forward in a very cost-effective way. Third thing I'd like to share with you is the understanding that every pathway, especially if it's a roadside retrofit project, is a drainage or utilities project. And outline some of our thoughts, I have Nick Griffiths, one of our chief multi-use pathway design engineers to share with you some of our insight. Nick?
Thank you, Bruce. As Bruce mentioned, every pathway, especially a roadside retrofit, is a drainage utility project. I'm going to step over to the slide, so if you have trouble hearing, or would it be better? All right. Oh, well, wow, thank you. I'll just. Is it? Yeah, yeah, you're live. That's great. All right. Some people start by just focusing only on the proposed cross-section. And they'll generate a nice cross-section. And while this looks good, what a lot of people don't realize is that this proposed section can be replacing an existing swell. And that swell, especially if the roadway in the original swell was designed since the stormwater man, since the water management district was in place, can be serving a number of specific stormwater functions. So this existing swell can have stormwater flow conveyance, water quality treatment and/or intenuation, and in some cases, floodplain mitigation. There's a number of streets in your city where the existing swell serves these functions. By looking at how this, that, I'm sorry, that serve these functions that have pathways planned beside them. By looking at how this portion of the existing swell will be displaced by the proposed cross-section early in the conceptual phase of the project, can help us to provide mitigation solutions for the existing swell. And by doing this during the conceptual phase of the project, we can help keep the design phase of the project on schedule. We can help keep the, help reduce the cost of the project during the construction phase and help eliminate surprises. Thank you, Bruce.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Another thing we'd like to highlight is the idea of enabling others to pay for, to build your pathways. I've, we've listed on this slide a number of funding sources for multi-use pathways from federal, state, and other sources. One of the key things that communities, especially in Florida, are finding, it's critically important in the concepting and designing of the, of these pathways to make sure they're compliant with federal, state, and regional design guidelines in addition to being compliant with local design guidelines. And I've listed a few of those that are really important. A lot of communities are finding, especially those that are along the St. John's to the Sea Loop and the Coast to Coast Trail, which are the high, highest priorities currently under the Sun Trail funding, is that they, if their plans are compliant with all that, they can get the federal dollars or get another agency to build those just right off the bat. So that's very key, especially as you well know, the regional trail, Southwest Regional Trail goes through or will be going through the city here. An area where we want to focus on outlining our project approach feasibility study is, is this third area. And to help me do that, I have Paul Hertz. What we're going to do is highlight very quickly seven of the tasks. Paul?
Thank you, Bruce. Good morning. The first item the UBUSIS address is how we plan to provide safety and security for the pathway users as well as the adjacent property owners. Thank you. The master plans has a number of different proposed pathways, and these are three in particular where we think safety and security are very important. In particular, there are some undeveloped right-of-ways. Cochrane Street is one where you might be able to connect the, to the existing neighborhoods to, to the east. The blue arrows indicate the direction that the pathway will need to go, in these cases, through the existing vegetation. And this is a shot of the power line corridor where the trail will also be going. So how do we plan for safety and security? One of the ways that we do it is through SEPTED principles. There are a number of those, and we'll highlight two of them. The first is natural surveillance. The natural surveillance really maximizes visibility and minimizes hidden and isolated areas. Basically, it's your eyes on the trail, if you will. The project in the middle is the one that the team has done in Phoenix, where we paired the transit stops with the crossings. Again, to get high visibility, to get those eyes on the trail. The project on the right is one that the team has done in Idaho. In this case, there was a private partial that was adjacent to a planned multi-use trail. The community worked with a developer, and the developer realized the value in placing his townhomes right on the edge of the multi-use trail. So you've again got eyes on the trail, benefit to the community, benefit to the developer. Another way to provide safety and security is through support activities. Pinellas County has a robust volunteer ranger program. And what a great way to have the, the members of your community see that the trail is safe and having community members ride on the trail and see, see the safety.
Third thing we'll be doing is provide best management practices to present a consistent and safe facility for the user within that operating environment. I want to highlight West Terry Street in that quarter there, for example. So presumably, the trail here would be going on the north side. And as many of you know, to the west end there, there's a lot of commercial driveways. In the east end, there's also other commercial driveways. Now, for a multi-use pathway in a constrained urban setting or suburban, suburban setting, what happens at driveways and side streets is that cars and motorists are rather distracted when they're crossing that pathway. They're looking for a gap in traffic or they're trying to cut in to there as, as we have illustrated here. So there's a lot of conflicts and a lot of distraction. And in fact, the, this issue and this challenge is very evident throughout Florida, throughout the United States, and internationally. The Ashtoe Guide for Development of Bike Facilities outlines fourteen reasons why these kind of pathway settings are very challenging. Now, we don't have time to go into all fourteen. Let me just highlight a few of them. First one, they say at intersections and driveways, motorists entering and crossing the roadway will not notice bicyclists. We illustrated that in that prior slide. Another one, number four there, attempts to require bicyclists to yield or stop at each cross street or driveway are inappropriate. And in fact, contrary to Florida law, which establishes those crossings as crosswalks. And I think the thing that really catches a lot of people by surprise is the number fourteen. There, traffic control devices such as signs and marking have not been shown to be effective at changing either motorist or pathway user's behavior. Now, that comes as a surprise to a lot of people. In fact, the Federal Highway Administration has done numerous studies to try and modify behavior there without, without success. In fact, that graphic is shown with a very highly signed and warned facility in Davis, California, very busy. And I don't know if you can see it, but right above that crash sign, on the sign, it says fifty points. So they, they've had a lot of trouble gras, grappling with that issue. Now, the good news is, we've had the opportunity to work with cities and state DOTs and FHWA in developing ways to mitigate some of these challenges. And I've illustrated a few of these techniques here, the graphics showing what's called approach chicanes. Essentially slowing down the bicyclists at these driveways and side street enable the motorists to see them a little bit clearer and to be able to yield and enable bicyclists to, to adjust as well. And we have some photographs underneath there, how these have been tried out in different places with great success around the United States. places with great success around the United States. And in fact, the techniques we've developed are documented in these national design guidance are for ways to help mitigate some of these challenging environments. Paul?
Thank you. Another item you've asked us to address is how we plan to provide a context-sensitive facility that achieves a high level of aesthetics and blends in with the neighborhood. So how do we do that? Well, there are a number of different projects that are identified in the master plan. There are safe routes to school projects, there'll be some intermodal connections, and then also the ones that are adjacent to private property owners and the neighborhoods. In terms of the safe routes to school, there are a number of different design criteria to consider. The path width would be one, excuse me. Closer to the school, it may be advantageous to have a wider path width, as the students get out, there are more students there, and as you get toward the edges, when it starts to filter out, maybe you can go back to a nominal path width there to keep that a little bit smaller. In terms of how we connect with the private property owners, we design every pathway in harmony with the community. We want the pathways to be good neighbors, if you will. One example of where we've done this is in Pinellas County on what was a controversial multi-use path and bridge replacement project. We worked with a series of 48 homeowner associations to build consensus on an aesthetics package and a route of the trail that was satisfying to the community. Another area you've asked us to look at is the historic, natural, scenic, and cultural qualities. The city has a rich historic history. There are a couple of areas in the multi-use trail plan that we've identified that we think we can take advantage of, we can capitalize. One project in particular that we've done that on is up in Pasco County. The trail went through an old cattle ranch, and we came across an old cattle dipping vat. And that photo is not from 2010, but rather 1910. And what we thought was what a great way to show the history of the Florida ranch and to tell the story of the Florida cracker. So we routed the trail past the cattle dipping vat in order to kind of capitalize on that.
We'll be addressing informational signage, wayfinding trails and maps, and there's just a host of opportunities and chances to really connect your residents to all the amenities and quality of life initiatives that you have around the city. So we're really excited with the prospect of doing that. We've worked for a lot of communities around Florida, for example, and the country. Those graphics on the left are a part of our city of St. Augustine, Citywide Bike Route Signage and Directional Plan. Our organization was also selected and led the U.S. Bicycle Route Signing Standards that are part of the National Committee of, the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices as well. We also have a number of examples of our signage plans and wayfinding for communities here in Florida.
Another item you've asked us to address is how we're going to look at the hardscape and provide that signature look. Well, what we would do is draw inspiration from what the city's already done along Old 41. The major crossings at the roundabout and even the minor ones are highlighted with the brick pavers and the granite, and that really provides a timeless look. So what we would look to do is play off that and enhance that and keep that same treatment going. We've done the same thing in similar communities. One closer to here is the city of Punta Gorda and their Harper Walk project.
Finally, we'll be providing recommendations on some of your pathway transitions. A couple of them we wanted to highlight, your existing depot Riverside Island parks, and if you find in part of the regional trail or expanding that width, you need to make use of the railroad, the existing railroad infrastructure. We've got a lot of experience with that type of conversion. This is an example of a former CSX line in the city of St. Petersburg next to Tropicana Field. The city wanted to do an adaptive reuse of that historic trestle bridge. So part of our master plan, we incorporated different options for that, and as you can see in the lower photographs, we ended up doing a concrete cap and still utilizing those trestles. Also, we understand the Terry Crossing of 75 is going to be very important to provide connection to the YMCA and the rest of the community, and we've got a lot of experience working with traffic engineering on the lane width changes and also clearing things with District One and FHWA if needed. In the last few minutes, what I'd like to do is highlight a couple of the final selection criteria, creative approach and design concepts, and some of our technical expertise. As John outlined, we have a lot of experience throughout North America and internationally with bicycle, pedestrian, and pathway design, and certainly throughout Florida. This is a bicycle expressway that we're working on in Atlanta, expanding the Belt Line and into the northern parts. We developed the city of St. Petersburg bikeway plan a number of years ago. We're continuing, expanding that system, doing design for their pathways, as we have highlighted there. Probably one of their signature projects is called the Downtown Connector. That was a streetscape transformation, putting in a cycle track. We work very closely with the mayor and council members, with the property owners, business owners on there, and as you can see, it's a very popular facility. And some of the innovations we did, the technical and safety innovations, have found their way into design guidelines.
Two-minute warning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Within two minutes, I think, sir. We helped the city transform from a poster child of mean streets to a model, livable community, and they have gotten repeatedly recently the gold designation from American bicyclists. We have a number of noteworthy Florida projects. We're starting to run out of time. Coast to Coast Trail is one of them we want to highlight, and Nick Griffiths and our staff are doing that design for connecting the two coasts together. And something very notable is, especially in constrained suburban and urban areas, is getting property owners to be partners with it through, with your pathway system. This is a project in Branson where we worked with the property owners, got easements, 30-foot deep easements across the entire frontage of their properties to get a multi-use pathway in that served them, that served the city. That's an underway project right now, very excited. Award-winning organization is what you were looking for in your RFP, you articulated, and we've got a lot of experience through the communities here in Florida, and we're excited to assist you and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you very much. Pete, want to kick us off?
Yeah, what I'm going to do, Bruce, is read two questions that council had a consensus on, and then go to individual council questions.
Yes, sir.
But just quickly off the top, who would be the key contact people that our staff would be dealing with on a day-to-day basis?
Okay, fair question. In our proposal, we have an organizational chart listed there, and our engineering project manager is Theo Petrich, and so he'll, he's shown at the top. This is our org chart in our, in our, it's in the middle. I'm principal in charge, very hands-on. I own my, I own our company, we're 25 individuals, and we're just up 41, a few miles in the Tampa area, but you'll see me a lot. John will be available and with transition. Then you met Paul, he's our landscape architect, he'll be very involved in that as well. And then Chris Fellerhoff as well, listed and shown on the org chart.
So the questions we have kind of hone in a little bit on the design elements here. And so the first was, is what would you identify as the top three innovative features that are imperative to a successful and well-used pathway facility? Ideas on that.
Okay, great, great question. I would say what's important is the elements that make them feel safe and comfortable for your residents and your visitors. A lot of your pathways are identified in your master plan as being alongside the roadway. And I would say the most common error that communities make and state DOTs make is trying to shoehorn something in, putting it too close to the roadway and making it too narrow because that's all the space that they had or that it was, seemed to be expedient on. So communities spend a lot of money doing the planning, the design, using their political capital, if you will, and not that many people use those facilities if they're too close to a roadway, if they're too narrow, if at the driveways, it's scary. Half of your population is 55 years old and older, and, you know, at the driveways and side streets, they have to, the motors have to be able to see and perceive and react and yield to the bicyclists. So, sorry, a long, long answer, there's probably two or three in there. I would say that's probably the most important, and that is pick carefully at the front end of a project, don't dive into a decision on what side of the road to be on in a rigid cross-section, you know. Work with the community, the property owners, let them be a part of the process so that when you, you're basically building a linear park, and it's got to be safe and comfortable because that's who you're trying to serve. The high-end cyclists, they're very comfortable on the roadway. And when they're traveling at that speed, they're safer on the roadway. But when you're, you don't want those high-speed cyclists on, high-speed on a path. So you want to be able to design that in a way that's safe and comfortable and popular.
Thank you. Second question relates to challenges, and you talked about chicanes as an idea, and this is toward that end. What are the unique challenges that you anticipate would directly impact multi-use path design and implementation within a city? What are some of your initial concepts for addressing these challenges? What past experiences has your firm overcome that are similar to these same challenges?
Okay. Great question. Let's first look at the context of a suburban setting where you have a rural or an open cross-section. As Nick mentioned, a lot of your roadways, the swales provide a stormwater conveyance function. And, you know, your constituents, they don't really care about that before the project starts, but if a project is done and that conveyance function or the stormwater treatment attenuation is disrupted and flooding occurs later on, then they will care about it. So I would say it's really important to work that aspect of the project right at the very beginning, in addition to meeting with the property owners. Another challenge that you run into, and I guarantee you'll run into it here, you're unique, just like the rest of the country, is that you're going to find a number of property owners and gated communities included, will, they'll look at it and say, "We don't need this. Why do we need it? Don't mess with us." I will tell you this, if you spend time talking to them and listening to them and sharing with them what other communities have found, you'll find they will realize, "Oh, that really is an asset to our community." They'll realize that, you know, "I can go for a longer bike ride, I can get my heart rate up, I can have better health as a result." You know, health and fitness is a very big interest. Being able to walk the dog or go for a run or something like that outside of their immediate community, you'd be amazed at how they're interested in it. If you're putting two-way pathways along your roadways, which is what I understand you have planned in your master plan, you'll have the pathway on one side of the road or the other. And so you'll have some communities say, "Wow, we want it over on our side." Others will say, "No, we want it on our side." Use that to generate interest in the entire thing, and you'll find you get partnership, especially where you have limited right-of-way. And most communities have limited right-of-way. That's probably the biggest challenge in terms of where to put that in there in a way that allows for a safe, comfortable, popular facility. As I shared with you, city of Branson, Missouri, was an area where we got people tripping over themselves to give us in the city easements because they desperately wanted it on their side of this, the pathway on their side of the street. We're helping communities in Atlanta. In fact, this Thursday, I'm going up to meet with a property owner. Everybody on that entire stretch of the roadway, this is in the perimeter center, which is the intersection of 275 and 400, everybody on this stretch of the roadway, there's about 20 property owners, all want except one group. And we've told them, the, "Everybody's on board or we're not even going to build it." And so now there's already peer pressure, you know, neighbors call neighbors, "Hey, come on, you know, let's move on with it." And the tough nut that we have to crack this Thursday, I heard them say, "Oh, so if we give you an easement, you guys will maintain the pathway and park area, so we don't have to." I go, "Yeah," you know, I'm going, you know, but to them, that mattered. So I think the key really is, the biggest challenge is constrained right-of-way, getting partnership with the property owners, the business owners, and you'll find they become allies if you take it in a very partnership approach. Sorry for the long answer.
No, thank you. Thank you, Pete. I'm going to start at this end. Amy, you want to start, or?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, great, great.
I guess my question is, you know, being at where I need a city council, and we always want to be, you know, first out there. My biggest question is with Theo, I'm reading some of his, what he's got planned, and it sounds like you guys are very busy, is he going to be able to, you know, put us as a priority?
Absolutely. He is, he's out this week at a, he's leading training for statewide in New Mexico, and that's been on the books for about five, five months or so. So otherwise, he would, he would be here.
Okay.
He's, he's a great presenter and a great designer. He is, he's really a nation's great resource in terms of design and that sort of thing. This is just unusual, this is the first time ever I've had to do one of his presentations. I enjoy it, don't get me wrong, but he's, he's one of the best employees I've ever had, and he's fantastic. He's not going to disappoint you one day.
Okay, and I guess my other question is, is it was in some of the scope work, would you guys be able to help us prioritize what streets or where we need to start, where we need to finish, what's the priority in the city based on the three or four between safety, concept, construction, and cost?
Absolutely, councilman. That's a lot of what we have been doing for the past 20 years, is help prioritizing. I would say at your stage, though, your prioritizing is probably going to be best factored by the support the adjoining property owners have, you know, along those routes. And so my suggestion is, is that should be a big criteria, especially if you have a constrained right-of-way and are going to need some easements or that sort of thing. The other thing, too, is I would prioritize on where you're going to get the most bang for your buck. Where are you going to see the most people using the facility? Because I can tell you, if you build a good facility that people feel safe and comfortable in, they'll use them, they'll be out there, and then you start getting the envy factor. And so that's probably, using the envy factor is probably the most important. And then also being very careful on the stormwater drainage issue right there. I mean, it, stormwater drainage costs can eat your lunch. So you have to be very careful about that, especially if you have open drainage. If you have closed drainage with a curbing in there, then it's not quite an issue, but open drainage shoulder, it's very hard to bring in curb and gutter in there if the longitudinal grade of the road is less than 0.3%. It gets a little tougher. So those probably are the biggest three prioritization criteria.
You're good? Steve? Thank you, I'm sorry.
Regarding your Erie Canal project, by any chance, was that in the Utica Rome-Hercimer area?
The where?
Utica Rome-Hercimer area?
No, that's mostly Rochester.
Rochester.
Rochester, yes. Parenton, well, Town of Greece is even tied on that. We did the Rochester bicycle plan, and a couple other, our other planner is mayor, is getting married this weekend. She's a Syracuse graduate and upstate New York.
All right.
So anyway, yeah, so sorry, you're getting, you're getting the B-team today, but...
That's all right. I wasn't actually supposed to be here today, but we ended Universal a day early, so are you good, Steve?
I'm good, thanks.
The nerve of somebody getting married.
Scheduling is scheduling, right? Mike?
You've hit on it a little bit with, like, realizing that signage doesn't work, and you're doing the approach chicanes instead to help with that. But we're, you know, we're really looking for a world-class, nationwide, signature project here, you know, that really sets us apart from everybody else. What other outside-the-box, new emerging technologies, you know, just the latest and greatest, you know, what have you guys been coming up with lately, you know, that you can, really stands out?
Multi-use pathways, side paths, cycle tracks, whatever, protected bikeways. The names are similar, the operational regime is the challenge. NACTO, for example, tells you on bikeways or cycle tracks, they work great where you don't have any interruption. There's nothing, you know, unique you have to do. The big challenges are at the driveway crossings and side streets. We're doing a, we've got a construction project underway in Atlanta right now in Decatur, Georgia. That's a Civil War-era town in the metro area. We did a street transformation there. We put oneirfs on the driveways so that the cars that are going... cars that are going over, they, they, they're not on the same, the, the driveway or side street's not on the same surface as the street. So in other words, they have a slight elevation change, they realize they're traversing a cycleway. So it's, it's kind of a psychological thing that, that enables them. We're doing a Omaha's old market to midtown cycle track. There we're using, in addition to some of these facili- lighted facilities, we're doing chicanes for both bicyclists and the drivers in those areas. We're doing Grand, Grand Boulevard in Kansas City, for example, and there we're doing a cycle track and we're, we're integrating that with their bus system and their BRT system. And there what we're doing is we're, one of the ways to manage the cyclist's speed going through the bus stop area is we bring the cycleway up on the same level as the bikeway right after an approach chicane there to slow those cyclists down. So it's kind of a mixing area. There, the reason we're doing that is the city doesn't have the money to do signalize, separate signalization for the bikeway, so we're converting them over to a PED function, you know, at the, at the transit station and the intersections and then they resume back over to a cycle track. I don't know if that totally answers your question, but we're trying different ways to, instead of just using a million dollars, you know, to solve a problem, we're using geometry and, and change. One of the graphics I showed you on the, I, I think probably the most effective method, I showed you the graphic underneath the chicane is from the Cultural Trail in Indianapolis. And there, as the, on the drive or the cycleway approach to an intersection or side street, we use a banding and further in approach, the banding is wide and then as the cyclist gets closer to the conflict area, the banding gets tighter. So it's a visual thing, it makes them in, instinctively slow down. So we're using a lot of texture as opposed to electronics to, to be able to bring about that, that safety and security for bicyclists.
Thank you. Mike, anything else? No? Fred?
Since we're looking for a world-class recognition, is there any things that come to mind that you would do where, where kind of, you know, a lot of this area like on Terry Street is residential, other than when you go across the schools and all that and then you get down to Old 41? Is there any, any things you, that come to mind that you could do that would pop those areas out, make them that world-class first image that we're looking for?
Well, Paul might want to add to, you know, our approach on hardscape or, or landscape. You know, this is South Florida and stormwater quality and quantity is, is a big deal. And some of the northern cities has kind of got an angle on what's called rain gardens and things of that nature. I think the, the, being able to integrate the, your stormwater functions, your treatment areas, I, I think Imperial River is an impaired water body. I think to be able to show a, an approach that, that addresses stormwater conveyance, treatment, you know, attenuation if needed, and integrating it into a bikeway that really helps visitors, residents, understand the importance of the environment, I think is, is a great opportunity that we have here. Another opportunity, just looking at your higher priority roadways, is I think you may find that you would want to put the pathway on one side of the road and then you may want to switch over. You've got some great opportunities to put mid-block crossings in there. Florida really has been a leader in bringing about pathway mid-block crossings. We helped pioneer the first use of RRFBs, which are the flat, you know, it's the mid-block crossing on steroids, the flashing. We also helped pioneer the pedestrian hybrid beacon. And now the Florida DOT District Seven has been pioneering the RRFBs as overheads and we've been pioneering the ways to provide a safe, comfortable mid-block crossing. So one of the biggest challenges that communities have is the chicken or the egg. If you, a lot of communities won't allow or, or agencies won't allow mid-block crossings because they have to have people crossing to justify the number. Well, if it's not safe and comfortable, you will never have the numbers to justify it. I would submit to you that here in this city, we can provide mid-block crossings that are very effective, that will really help set the stage, that will really solve a lot of problems that people all over the country have been trying to figure out. So, you know, adding aesthetics to it, to make it attractive and enjoyable, making sure that it's really effective, I think it'll put you on the map. And I think not only will you benefit your residents and visitors, you'll also really put yourself on the map in solving a, a problem.
Two-minute warning, but that's for all of us, I guess. Did you want to add something to that?
Sure, just briefly to follow up the, as Bruce mentioned, the word integrating, and that's really what we do, we integrate all the elements into that. And I would kind of look back to what's been done on Old 41. Really, that's kind of a project that really integrated all the elements there between the, the roadway surface, looking at the pass, looking at the landscaping, looking how the cars function. And I think that's how we would approach Terry Street as well, looking at how we develop that in an integrated way with all the elements there, whether it be stormwater, utilities, the surface of the pathway, the elements that have been done on Old 41, maybe we can apply those to Terry Street, maybe some landscaping there. And I think once you begin to have kind of this integrated approach, you have a project that really sings, it's not just the pathway, it's much more than that. And I think that's what Bruce was alluding to there, so.
And if I could chime in, I don't think we saw slides specifically and if we did, I apologize, but what's the closest you would recommend the trailway be, either from the center line or from the white line?
Okay. Well, Mayor Ashto recommends and I'll, I'll put it, put the recommends in quote, it's a five-foot offset from the edge of the roadway to the inside edge of, of the pathway. That recommendation, quote-unquote recommendation, has been in place for about 20 years or so. The reason for that, and euphemistically it says, it's, it's on page five dash eight, it says so that trail users can see that the facility is separate from the roadway. Really what it means is that, that area, that offset from, from minimum offset is such that if you have an errant bicyclist, a child, for example, loses control of their cycle, their bicycle, they're not rolling out into traffic. So I would say the, the, that would really be, that's your, your, and there's been some notable lawsuits on organizations that have compromised that and it didn't come out well for the organization. I would submit that depending on the speed and the traffic of your roadway, you may want to have a greater offset. Again, it depends on your, your, your speed. We have one client in North Atlanta to where they wanted a little bit greater offset than that and we helped them with a speed study and some traffic calming to lower the speeds so they could, they could have a little bit smaller.
And with that thought in mind, how many difficulties do you see making it further on Terry Street?
Oh, wider than the five feet?
Correct.
I would just say right-of-way and drainage. And, and again, I, I, I think usually the better thing to do is put as latterly far away from the roadway as you can, given the topography and landscaping and all that. So I, I think, I think drainage is probably going to be the biggest issue. A little bit of utilities, although most of them tend to be closer to the roadway. But, but again, you want to have it as safe and comfortable and as park-like as, as you would like and that's lateral separation-
Great.
-is your best friend there on.
Thank you very much, we're out of time. Thank you very much for being here this morning.
Thank you.
So we are 11:55, really? Oh, 11:30, excuse me, yep, 10 minutes, 10-minute break.
Yeah, 35. Except for in front of middle school, then it's 20, so yeah, it's 35 all the way down.
Till you get up to West Terry and it goes up to 40.
Yeah.
You've got to have a steady-handed, I was watching.
And he'll die usually.
No.
He's out of control on caffeine, so he's got to stick to the-
I was.
That's right. It's all a myth, it's like tryptophan, thanks.
The one I seen, I got fishing, right in the, in the Irish play. So they had like-
Yeah, so the Celtics traded the number one overall pick to Philadelphia for three and then like another draft pick. So, and that's kind of funny, I'm not a huge basketball fan. What involves the Celtics? Yes, Celtics, yeah, they do from time to time.
Baseball, it's okay. I'm surprised it's still, yeah.
I hear you, buddy.
Baseball's a national pastime, shouldn't it stay?
Past, stay in the past? Very good. Mikey's giving baseball a hard time. Yep. He said the America's national pastime, shouldn't it stay in the past?
I'm not going to raise to that thing. This is a little too small for my ambition.
Oh, yeah. I'm not good doing this.
Sure, you got to take a year off running your first base and, you know, maybe a little more interesting. Hit the ball again when they try to-
I have never done that, yeah. I will tell you, I've had other situations.
Right.
And he's not agreed with me and I got the hand gap.
So let me tell you, I'm a weak on, I'm a revolutionary, go forward to state. Now, it's like, you're in the woods up there. I didn't even know Paul Rees were going to visit Concord. He didn't. One of those things.
Lexington.
So that's why they used to stay. We did Ryan and actually there were two of them, she was probably, Lexington and Concord was all got named by Lexington. Took his horse and told him. You've got to go to a Florida State school. Yeah, you get what you put back into.
We got your team.
I had a reason, four years of college.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Actually, I didn't know that point either, so. Well, you want to hear something funny is, you, you know how Jim, Mayor Bosch and I from Estero went up to see the county commissioners, but still has to stop, we're working through it. I'm looking at Frank Mann's wall and I see William, he's got this great big family tree that the historical society gave for them and I see one of his branches is William Bradford. I'm like, I think I'm related to William Bradford. I said, I said, I'm not sure, might have the name, right? Sure enough, I dive into my family tree and the two, for two generations, the names are the same. And then it goes from there, but, uh, the May, from the Mayflower, from the Mayflower. But some, but some of the Bradfords did go to Connecticut, yes, yes, yes. So Frank Mann and I are like, what, what would that make it? Twelve cousins? How does that work if it goes back 12 generations? Yeah, Frank.
Now we're going to screw it up, Frank's not really a whole kid.
And he isn't, right? It's all from, he's all Mayflower-Boston. Yeah, right. Did you hear that? Frank Mann and I are related, documented. Yeah, 12 generations back.
The resemblance is untanny.
From, from the Mayflower, a strand of the Mayflower, yeah. It's 11:30, so we might as well go ahead, team, if everybody's good to go. Arlene, you want to kick us off, please?
Yes, we'd like to introduce our next group to come forward, please, and you can introduce yourselves to the mayor and council. It is 11:30, you will have 25 minutes for your presentation followed by 20 minutes of questions and answers.
Great, thanks a lot. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Greg DeSereau, I'm Vice President of David Jones and Associates, local landscape architect and planning firm, and we appreciate the opportunity to present our, our team's present, our team for this particular project, for the multi-use pathway. With me is Claire from Dave Douglas and Jason, I'm sorry, rough warning, from Cardinal Mooney. Our team, we're local firms with national, teaming with national firms as, as well. All three of us here are, are local, but Cardinal also has some national reputation and our, our final team member, who unfortunately cannot be here due to the scheduling- and our, our final, uh, team member, who unfortunately cannot be here due to the scheduling. They were already committed to providing, um, design surets to other communities, so they could not be here. But most of you are probably familiar with them as Tool Design Group, uh, who was part of the, actually, you're a consultant on the Benita Beach Visiting Project. All of us are experts in, in our field of discipline, we've all, uh, worked together in the past, together, provide high caliber work to our clients, uh, do provide a lot of public work. We work on a regular basis with all the communities in, in South Florida. Uh, we are on continuing services contracts with a number of the, uh, cities and municipalities, uh, in, in, uh, Lee and Southwest Florida. We get things built. Our, our designs, uh, are, are buildable, they're not pie in the sky designs. You've, you've all had sufficient studies, we believe, and, and the goal of this is to implement and get things built. And we are committed, hundred percent committed to the city of Benita Springs to, to help you, uh, meet, meet your goals and objectives and, and bring your dream to fruition. In short, our only goal for the project is successful implementation of, of your multi-use trail plan and then your other plans that you have assigned to this. There's a well-done study, uh, by McMahon and Associates and, and our goal was, is to help you implement that, uh, through, through this process. Uh, bring, bring the planning process into an actual constructable and permissible set of plans. This is a general, uh, outline of our, order of, of how, how we associate with each other. Uh, we are involved as need be for each, in each individual task that is assigned. I particularly do not, um, have pride of authorship as, for the entire project. I, I, we have experts in the field that, that we utilize and, and, um, work even if it comes from public input, that type of stuff. You know, we, we want to get to the best quality design, uh, and project that, that we can. I will be your project manager. As, um, as mentioned, Claire will, will be one of the ones heading up the engineering team to make sure that what, what is actually designed and can, can be constructed. And then Jason is, is with the, the surveyors to make sure we have the accurate, deep information we need. Briefly, a little bit about Dave Jones and Associates, we're locally owned and operated since nineteen sixty here in Lee County. Uh, we are a disadvantaged business, a service to disabled veteran company. Our principals are involved in day-to-day activities of all our projects. Personally, I have thirty-six years of local experience, um, and a, a large portion of that thirty-six years was in the, working with, with, again, the different municipalities and providing public, public work projects. We are Group Fifteen F.D.O. Qualifier, which, which basically means that we're working within an adjacent road right-ofways is, is nothing new to us. We, we do it on a regular basis and we understand the, the, all the issues associated any time you interact with the roadway. Well over a thousand projects in the local area. I stopped counting at fifty public facilities that, that we've, we've done in that range, from everything from multi-use trails, multi-use facilities, justice centers, parks, um, two professional ballparks, both the spring training complex for Minnesota Twins and, and the Red Sox. In fact, we've actually done the Twins complex twice, once when it was originally built, I was the landscape architect there then, and then the recent remodel, which means I've been around, I'm not quite as young as I think I am. We have success, all our team members have successful working relationships with the digital permitting agencies, which is vital in, in making sure that any plan can be constructed. And as I said, we are all committed, we're committed to our communities. Briefly, just one of the projects, uh, similar to this with, with multi-use trails is, you know, Lakes Park Regional Park, we were involved with, with that and creating some, some trail system within their master plan, as well as Billy Creek Filter Marsh, uh, incorporated a, a trail system into that, along with all the public educational things that went in with that. We have the local expertise and knowledge, again, we're dedicated. And also, I was a, a very active team member in, in the Benita Beach Road Visiting Process with, with Tool Design Group. I was real fortunate to be a member of their team and, and quite frankly, learned a heck of a lot during that two-week process as well. We were the prime consultants on the ten-mile linear park with John Yarborough, linear park of three phases. It's actually about six miles long, multi-use path that was sandwiched in between a canal and, and a railroad right-ofway, very tight working conditions. Uh, we were able to incorporate and develop, uh, a complete trail system, working with and having a lot of public input through the neighborhood that, that we bypassed as well. Also have designed, uh, Trailhead Park, the city of Fort Myers first Trailhead Park facility, which actually, uh, connects the, the ten-mile with their North Colonial Trail, North Colonial Canal Linear Trail, and we worked with them to help develop some master plans to, to continue that on, on over, uh, further west to, to forty-one and, and McGregor-Borlorn. Warhavon Canal Linear Trail was, it was a park facility and inner trail facility that we, we developed on a project that started out to be a dredging project. This is actually in Lake Okeechobee itself, it's only accessible via ferry. It's about a six-mile-long linear trail and park, uh, that is going to be, this portion is not yet built, it's going through funding at the moment, but, but the dredging portion of it is, is underway, um, again, making it a, a destination point and, um, a big asset for the community. Our particular project or involvement in this process is multi, we're going to be doing a lot of project management, obviously, for, for the team itself. We're involved with the public informational workshops as, as, as needed or as, as they come about. Working with the design team and designing the public spaces and, and detailing the hardscape signage, full landscape irrigation, uh, assisting with the permitting and, and construction administration and providing, assisting with the construction administration. Our, our, um, experience with public projects, even though as, as landscape architects, we are involved on numerous projects as, as a prime consultant on, on multimillion-dollar projects, so construction meetings and methods and overseeing this type of project is, is nothing out of the unusual for our, for our firm. However, we, we know we are not the true experts in this. You ask for a national firm with, with high quality, Tool Design Group is, is one of the top. As I'm sure you probably remember from, from the Visiting Program, uh, we were delighted to have them on our team. They too are engineers, planners, landscape architects and, and the authors, they get projects built. Authors being one particular thing that I think will help trip this process along is that they wrote, written numerous standards, US standards for pedestrian bikeways and, and multi-use facilities. They've been involved in, in, in the reputation. I, I certainly can't do them justice in, in my presentation to them. I'm not as informational or probably as entertaining as Ian is, uh, during his process. Uh, but, but it, he, he will be involved on, on a regular basis throughout this, him and his team of Cindy, Ken and Jeffrey. And Cindy and Ken were also involved in the Benita Visiting, so it's not, nothing new to them, they are familiar with the city. They, they know what it takes. I'd, I give them a lot of kudos in the fact that, that they're willing to join a team and, and not be the, the lead consultant on it. They recognize the importance of taking a, a plan from, from the planning stages and reports to actual construction. And, and having, they believe too that having local presence, uh, local engineers and, and professionals involved throughout it is, is key to the success of the project. They are nationally recognized, some of the cities and projects that they worked on throughout the United States. And in addition, it's project specific is to Florida, you know, the, the, Ian actually lives in Orlando. These are a few of the, few of the projects they're involved with. Again, and, and most recently, of course, you're familiar with, is the, uh, Benita Beach Visiting Process and, and the report that they provided for, for the city. Who, who do we design these pathways for, who should they be designed for? The experienced, uh, and confident rider that, that utilizes on-street bicycle pathways and that make up a very small one percent of the population. They'll, they'll ride basically on, on anything that's out there. The casual, uh, somewhat confident rider, again, that only makes up another seven percent of the population, very small. Whereas the interested but concerned and, and really need an, an area to, um, feel safe biking and walking and, and using is, is, is more the, the ones we're geared toward. They have a much lower stress tolerance, all, obviously, than the experienced rider. So our goal is, is to design the facility that's, that's user-friendly for all ages, all, all manners of people. If, if we could design a, a multi-use or a, a trail like nature does where the stress and, and the enjoyment is, can't get any better than that. Unfortunately, our cities don't look this way, so we need to be able to bring this type of sense of security and, and feeling in, into, into our environment. These are some of the studies and some of the existing actual pathways and, and facilities across Europe. I'm showing this, these photos, these are actual photos and, and actual places that Tool Design Group studied as they were, in order to, to bring and write the guidelines for, for the US, um, standards for, for bikeways. They take, taken a, realized what works in the past in other communities, even though, even though they're not in the United States, and incorporated the successes in, into their, writing the guidelines. Projects, obviously, one in Florida, West Palm Beach, North Flagler, one that was done. This particular on, on-lane bike route, again, you can see who would probably end up using it, so one percent. Through proper design, you, um, you can convert it very easily to, to the type of users that, that were proposing to, that, that you want to have using the facilities. Next few slides are just really showing the different methods and, and types of protected bikeways and multi-use trails that can be developed, given the, the conditions out, out on a site and they change from block to block to block. So, uh, solutions for each type of situation, uh, can, can be and has been done in the past. And we're not necessarily having to recreate the wheel, but we can bring positive, um, success projects to, to the project. Make them, again, the whole goal is to make them buildable and sustainable and maintainable for, for the city. Coming all different shapes and sizes and forms, would, would, would be normally conceived as a, uh, desolate or, or urban type facility can be created into a, a public asset, as you see here. Again, same, same situation, you create sense of, sense of place and, and landmarks that can really enhance any, uh, linear facility that, that throughout, that connects the, the linear trails with the public different facilities that, that will be along the way, whether it's schools or libraries, and the different architectural treatments that, that are incorporated in, into them. In order to be able to provide buildable plans, we, we need good surveys. Uh, we need good base information. Cardinal has many, uh, different methods of, of developing, um, and providing surveys so that we know what land is, is available, what land is not available, what land we may, may need to, uh, work with adjacent property owners or stakeholders. I think we've all recently seen what happens when, when you don't have the right information on, on public land when you're trying to develop something. Some articles in the news recently with the high school, there's some issues with, that are being dealt with. But they have the ability to provide in a, in a timely manner, that, that any type of depth of information we need for, for survey information. Dave Douglas will be doing the engineering and after that I will turn it over to him.
Great. Welcome.
Good morning. Uh, as Greg mentioned, my name is Claire Wright, I'm a senior design engineer and project manager with David Douglas Associates. And just wanted to, uh, bring to your attention some of the projects that we've done for the city in Lee County, uh, in, in the area. Um, starting off with, uh, Benita Beach Road Phase One, Two and Three. All of these projects I was either involved with, uh, on a design level or management level. These projects basically involve the widening of Benita Beach Road to six lanes, uh, from west of forty-one all the way to the interstate. So different access management items and drainage features and stormwater management features, uh, as well as the utilities for Benita Springs Utilities, um, were designed as part of these projects. Also did some, uh, work on a Royal and the Carolina Street Extension. Did drainage analysis, uh, Wisconsin and Michigan Street, um, as well as design for, uh, improving drainage down those areas. And recently completed the downtown redevelop, uh, redevelopment for Benita Springs Utilities on the water, Water Main and Forest Main. So, um, we'll get into a little bit more in-depth on some of this here in a second. Um, again, moving east on Benita Beach Road, uh, Benita Beach Road Phase One ended at the interstate. Staff has also, uh, did the redesign for the interchange at seventy-five. Done the sidewalk from seventy-five to Benita Grand. Redesigned the Benita Grand intersection and also designed pathway from Benita Grand out to the Palmyra Development. So, as you can see, we've got a, a lot of history, a lot of design information that we've got knowledge of through this process and understanding your community. So it would be a great asset, uh, for this project. Again, a little bit more in-depth on a couple of projects, um, the Benita Springs Redevelopment Project that you guys I'm sure are aware, aware with. Uh, we did do, uh, coordination and design for Benita Springs Utilities, uh, so we do have those contacts, which is going to be important for any, any pathways generally in this area. It was a complete street design that we coordinated with Agnoli Barber and Brundage, uh, through the whole design and construction, so, um, it's a good project. Estero Boulevard, we're the design engineers, um, for that. Segment one and two are, are complete in design and three through six are actually in design right now. Uh, again, a complete, uh, complete seat project with pedestrian and, uh, bicycle facilities, as well as trolley stops, accommodations for things like that. Skyplex Boulevard, this is another one recently completed design, uh, connects, uh, Daniels Parkway and, and Chamberlain Boulevard. A complete street, street project with separated bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And David Douglas Associates also prepared the first typical section for the downtown Fort Myers, uh, design and implementation for the complete streets down there, so. As you can see, we have a vast majority or, or have a lot of experience with these types of proj, projects, um, tight corridors, also open corridors. Um, in addition to these, we've also, uh, designed over fifty bus, bus stops, um, for LeTran, uh, in the cities and counties, um, in, in this area. So that'll be a great asset. In regards to utilities, um, it's not something that didn't come up, right? But not something that we need to overlook. Again, we have the contacts with Benita Springs Utilities, um, some of the other, uh, utilities, this is a typical section of a project that we did where it was a tight right-ofway, a lot of utilities. I just want to let you know that we can help you through that, we can get through that for you, so it shouldn't be something that should be overlooked. Same thing with the drainage and stormwater management, as an example of what we implemented, um, on a different project to, uh, avoid having, uh, additional stormwater management ponds to add these pathways in. A lot of times the area where you're adding them, uh, does impact the drainage or stormwater management facilities. So, uh, our goal would be to not do that, but introduce other items, um, such, such as exfiltration trenches and things like that to minimize the footprint, but still keep your water quality, um, as it is.
A five-minute warning.
And lastly, in regards to permitting, uh, if you have involvement on, on the forty-one corridor, you have F.D.O. permitting. Again, with the water management, um, you'll have permitting with them. And then if there's impacts to Benita Springs Utilities, also, uh, permitting with agencies with those, so. With that, turn it back over to Greg.
How do we exceed the community goals? First off, the team members we selected, you see they're all have experience in, in the city, experienced with the, the type of projects and, and are committed to it, so that's step one. Step two, national expertise, any, more likely any situation we come across in any of these multi-use corridors have already been dealt with in some form or fashion by Tool Design Group, so that. already been dealt with in some form or fashion by Tool Design Group, so that a quick remedy and a quick solution can be provided to the city. We recognize the City of Benita Springs staff, they are vital members of our team. We enjoy working with them, and we'll look forward to something, a very collaborative effort. Nobody has more information than they do on the city, so they're vital members. Again, we have the experience to know when to use a shared pathway, separate the wheels and heels, two ways, pairs. We have the ability and the expertise to come to a quick solution on all these facilities. And then we have local expertise to get it permitted and constructed. It's very important to get through the local permitting process in a timely fashion. The team has successfully done this on multiple projects in the past of all types and all sizes. We work regularly with communities and public, going through the public process and to come up with support for projects. Work with and partner with, not all the work will be done within a, could be done within a contained right-of-way perhaps, so we want to work with the partners, the adjacent landowners or developers, other properties that will benefit the community and achieve the overlapping goal of the community. As I said, we understand a subject matter at all levels, from the people that wrote the book to actually implement it, met the process, to actually use these facilities, so we're able to come up with solutions that meet the goals of the high-type, high-end facility that you're looking for. We're responsive. Being local, we can be here at a moment's notice for anything that comes up. We also have the national backing of the experts with Tool Design Group to address any project or any problem that arises, so we can be very responsive and get things done. Constructibility, our projects are constructible. We make sure that they meet the permitting agency requirements, the client's requirements, and the budgets. I think evidenced by Claire's presentation, deal with right-of-ways, utilities, all these elevation changes on a daily basis, so again, we'll be able to provide. We know how to get projects implemented.
One minute.
We know how to get projects implemented and staging that address the needs of the community and the businesses. We're responsive throughout construction. Again, being local, we can be here in a moment's notice. We're familiar with all the contractors, suppliers, and costs within the local development community, so briefly, just utilize all the public outreach programs that are necessary. Just a short list of some of the challenges that you can expect as you move through this, whether it's pedestrian traffic flow, interaction with businesses and residences, utility services, public approval, and we have solutions to help assist in getting through the process in a timely manner. Why our team? We understand the importance of these projects, positive impact for the community. We're familiar and recognize the importance of public involvement, community support. We utilize cutting-edge technology and standards for these. Proven history with different cities in providing these type of facilities. National user with, national expertise with user-specific expertise. We're local expertise with all permitting and utility agencies. All of us are experts in our field, we work very well together and bring you the best of all worlds. Our approach is thorough, practical, with innovative solutions. We are committed to the community, and we can help you get your facilities built. With that, I want to thank you and happy to try to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Pete?
Greg, thank you. I've been asked to, we met beforehand, to come up with some standard questions. I'm going to go through two, and then we'll go to individual council questions, but just before that, who would the key contact persons be on a day-to-day basis that our staff would be working with on this, from your end?
It would be myself.
Okay.
And then depending on what their question is, what their goal, I would either, well, I would either direct them and work with Claire or Ian, but all communication would initiate through me initially, just so that we can be readily available to address their concerns in a timely fashion.
Thank you. So the questions that we selected focus on the design aspects, and you've touched on some of that in the presentation. So the first was, is what would you identify as the top three innovative features that are imperative to a successful and well-used pathway facility?
The comfort level, creating a comfort level and safety, the perceived safety, not only safe wide, but also the perceived safety of it, of any facility to make it usable for all different levels. Obviously, it's got to be have, intersections have to be addressed so that, those are the major factors that you go through in any type of facility like this, so properly addressing the safety and the crossings at each of the intersections would be other ones. And then the comfort level. We live in South Florida. Obviously, you can have a beautiful facility, but if you don't provide the shade and the benches and the other facilities that are required, it just wouldn't get the same use that it should normally otherwise.
Thank you. The second was, and I know you had a slide on challenges, and that's what this is addressed to this question. What are the unique challenges that you anticipate would directly impact multi-use path design and implementation within the city? What are some of your initial concepts for addressing these challenges? And what past experience has your group had that would be similar to these same challenges?
Some of the biggest challenges is obviously dependent on what pathway we're working on, and that is the right-of-way. You know, obviously, the goal would be to work within the city-owned right-of-ways, just to, if it can make the pathway work, but given the various lists of different right-of-ways and that, sometimes it's not always practical, so we will want to obviously understand that going into it is one. I'm sorry, the second part of the question?
Oh, sure. There's three questions in one. What are some of your initial concepts on addressing these challenges?
Haven't really, quite frankly, haven't come up with any real concepts for a particular location as of yet. Again, our goal will rely on the information we have and developing the concepts. Obviously, we want some connectivity as we go through and places, you know, connecting 41 to your new 41 downtown area, the schools and all that, safety. So I haven't gotten into the concepts as of yet, other than, again, to rely on Tool's expertise and their vast knowledge, and this is where I said I couldn't do them justice.
Right. And the third maybe plays into that as well, says what past experiences has your group overcome that are similar to these challenges?
And any streetscape we've done, I was involved also, I didn't mention, but in the north Estero Boulevard, when that street was redone and developing sidewalks, pathways, and trolley stops in conjunction with the complete street facilities, and working with the community and the residences and businesses, and working through the construction issues as you open up the ground and you find all kind of stuff that was not anticipated, hence coming back to, you know, good upfront survey information. The 10-mile linear park, again, nestled in between a very tight site between the canal with some mural issues with the slopes of the canal and the right-of-way of a railroad, made it very difficult to design and work with them, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, think we'll mix it up a little bit. Mike, start with you.
Yeah, this is going to be our first pathway, so we really want a signature piece that we can kind of base all future pathways on. So what, like, world-class design features, you know, are you envisioning, or, you know, can you bring to the table to really make this a?
Again, a lot of that's going to depend on the area available to work, and I can see a lot of these things being spilling over into some of the other public lands that are above these, like in front of the community center or the schools, where you can actually get some nice, good focal point features. Signage, wayfinding signage is vital throughout, you know, some creative and high-end type signage that really makes it user-friendly. There are going to be a lot of different, you know, sculptures, artwork, fountains, obviously, rest and pedestrian areas with shelters and shade and that, to interconnect the paving and the type of pavers and architectural features that can be incorporated into it, making some standardization so that no matter what pathway you're on, you know you're on a well-designed city pathway.
You good, Mike? Fred?
What's, how much more complex is designing a in-the-city bike path, walkway, as opposed to the, a park and more rural setting?
Obviously, you have a lot more conflicts with vehicles.
I mean, I'm looking for a number, like, is it five times more difficult, or 10, or
I think that all depends on what community you're actually working in, and again, the land available. It's, there's a lot more factors, probably five times more, but that, again, that is something that we deal with on a regular basis on any type of project. And any project you build in the city, you have issues where you have to overcome and deal with.
Fred, you okay? Amy?
Would you be able to provide any funding assistance in the sense of your connections to the various grant-making agencies?
Yes, I believe we can. We've done, personally, Dave Jones and Associates have done some grant works on some roadway landscape improvement projects. I know Ian and his group has been involved in a lot of different funding sources, so I cannot specifically name them right now, but yes.
Thank you.
We will be available for that, yes.
Thanks, Amy. Greg?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, or probably just one. In the background, on the RFP and RFQ, we talked about priorities and safe routes to school, connectivity and construction and cost design. In the, if your firm selected, will you be able to help us and give us our priority? All right, for the biggest bang and a connectivity, we should go with this area town versus that area town. Is that something your firm does on a regular basis?
Yes, yes, we do. All of our projects, we do prioritize and then provide you the, you know, whether we start out with a broad-brush cost analysis of what it's going to take, but a lot of our projects that we do have to deal with getting the first things out the door to be a success. We were involved with the Henry Street prototype with Dave Douglas, and the goal of that was obviously to show, build a real working model for downtown Fort Myers, to show what could, this site could look like, what the downtown area could look like. We do provide that. We will give you cost benefits and tell you what we think is your most bang for your buck right out the door. Obviously, connecting, and a lot of it depends on the available budgets to work with at the time. You know, we may say that Terry Street is probably your top priority due to the location of school, community center, connectivity between old 41 and new 41, but if your budget only allows for a block somewhere, maybe there's another area that will benefit initially, so we are available, and we do provide that on a regular basis.
All right. Thank you.
Steve, you okay? Okay, could you go back to the slides that show the projected bikeway and multi-use? About a series of six slides on each, please. Oh, man. Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to do that to you, but okay.
That's quite all right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry about that, but we got time, so that's good, actually. What page number would that be?
Are you talking about your?
Yeah, no page. Yeah, this.
We're talking about the examples, this one right here.
Yeah, this, these examples here.
Oh, those examples.
I'm sorry.
I passed on that one.
There we go. Back one more, I think, and then I think we'll be, oh, I guess not. Okay, yeah, okay. Either way, and if there's a second slide that goes with it too, which situation here along Terry Street do you feel is most apropos to Terry Street? And let's answer that, and then I have a follow-up with setbacks.
We're probably looking more at a, probably the one on the right.
Top right?
Top right, top right, or even though the bottom has a two-way pair, or the bottom. Again, a lot of it depends on whether we're working within the existing right-of-way, or there's a lot of land available under private development on the north side of Terry that should be incorporated into the multi-use pathway, should be part of, because it benefits everybody, benefits the community, so then opens up all the options for that. It needs to be separated of some kind, just given the residences and the school and all that, that the users that we want on there. We certainly can do, you know, on-road things, but they won't get the use that you need, so I would envision the top right or, you know, the bottom middle.
And thank you for that, and knowing that you know the area, what challenges do you see for the top right on Terry Street? And then I'll guess, I'll just throw, my last would be, what would you recommend as the minimum and/or maximum, quite frankly, from the white line on Terry Street? Not, or center line, whatever, whichever way you want.
Minimum, probably four to six feet from the travel lane.
From the white line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would be the minimum to give the comfort and safety. The issues have, some of the issues, obviously, the water, anytime we're expanding into what's previous area now, water management is going to be an issue, coordinating with any existing utilities that might be in there, so we're not impacting that. And then obviously, addressing any of the drives or intersections or, you know, crossing the railroad, those type of things are going to be.
Well, believe it or not, this isn't a quiz, but is a state standard, five feet or four feet? Either way, I mean, that's bare minimum. Do you see, what I'm getting at is I'd like to see it further away. Lay my cards on the table. Do you see that being a big challenge on Terry Street?
Again, depending on, within the limits of the right-of-way, yes. If we're able to work with community and developers and get some agreements in place to work outside of it, we have the room there to really expand and get some decent. I'd like to have eight to 10 minimum, just so that we have some room for some planning and some, to give you that added sense of security and.
And where that runs into drainage, but actually, in theory, in my simple mind, and then I'll actually, we'll have, we have extra time for more questions. The closer you are to the street, the more you're going to run into drainage problems, right? Correct? And the further away, less drainage, or not necessarily so?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Again, some of it depends on, some sections of it, it's an urban cross-section where you do have the drainage structures right there along the curb. At times, it's a rural section where you have the swell, you know, so it does vary as you go through that.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? We have five more minutes. Amy?
I just have a question. Are there any innovative surfaces for the bikes or the sidewalks, other than concrete or whatever we're using, you know?
Unfortunately, the concrete or asphalt or, without getting into, I mean, they do have some acrylic overlays and things like that that can be used as well, but they are the most durable and the most, if you're talking about a multimodal system, the wear can be used for bike, rollerblading, the whole nine yards, those are your.
Well, and some of these pictures, it looks like there's a coloration difference.
Yes, there is.
So just put colored.
Yes, there is a color, and the color is being developed also as a standard for clarity, for letting you know that this is a bikeway and letting the motor know and understand, so those are all the standards that are developed and are being developed. But, yeah, there are those type of treatments that are done to help.
Thank you.
I'm going to jump back in here. So. So, we're still on the upper right there. What projects, seeing how you've done extensive work in the local area, what would you give us as a for instance in the local area that you've done that would be comparable to Terry Street or what you envision doing? Or what would you change about what you did locally that you would do a little bit differently on Terry Street? How's that?
Probably the best from a street standpoint, and it's not quite the same because we didn't have the right-of-way to provide a true multi-use facility, but we did develop and the sidewalks and wider pedestrian ways is the North Estero Boulevard. When you cross over the bridge from the north end of the.
From the Tansas Pass?
Yes, from the north end, where you go up to Blotage Point and all that, redesigning all that and providing not only the drainage and exfiltration for the drainage and trolley turnoffs, but getting some separation into the pedestrian pathways on each side. We, there in a lot of cases, we were down to one or two feet, just because of limitations. But, so anytime we can get more, more than that is what I would prefer to see. The biggest thing on that particular project, I would have loved to have seen the overhead power lines disappear because that drastically impacted what we could do aesthetically with the landscaping to help improve it more than I think it's currently.
Right. And to do differently, you'd turn back the hands of time and have more room to work with, right?
And more money.
And more money. Fair enough. Fair enough. Counsel, we still have three minutes. Anybody else have anything else they want to follow up on or? Do you have anything you want to add? I know you had a presentation, but maybe miscellaneous that we're not asking, that we should be asking.
Again, as I stated in the beginning, there's no way I can give justice to the experience that Toll Design Group is bringing to the team. Ian and his team greatly apologize for not being able to make this, but they were committed on their design shreds with other communities throughout the country and couldn't arrange it for this one. It probably would have been best to answer some of those questions. We're looking to, their team to set the standards and set the goals, and then we implement them, which is not uncommon. We've done, for example, on the two spring training complexes we worked on, they had a national sport architect firm developed the overall design intent and all that, and then local architects and engineers and landscape architects took that vision and created it into a buildable, permissible document that is what you see out there now. So, that's sort of the type of approach we want to take here, is using their expertise and their knowledge, and certainly, they're going to be at the table every day with us and bringing you the best facility possible.
All right. And actually, thank you, we have just about a minute left. I'll jump back in. Drainage, obviously the million-dollar question in Southwest Florida. Especially this time of year.
It is.
It's wet on Terry Street, in case you haven't noticed. What would you do to drain the water?
Drainage, as I briefly mentioned, is something that, you know, sometimes in the planning phases where it's overlooked in a lot of areas where you think it's just a ditch out here, and I'll just use Benita Beach Road. For example, the ditches on the south side of Benita Beach Road aren't just for conveyance, they're actually for water management. It's a water management facility. So, a lot of these areas where some of the pathways will go will be into where the ditches are or stormwater management is. And so, the permitting and the design aspects of that are a big component of the design and actually making sure that we still conveying the water or storing the water and that your water quality remains as it is or if not better. So, there's different alternates out there. Exfiltration, which is kind of like a perforated pipe, but doesn't necessarily work in the wet season, but it does give you some water quality characteristics for a good portion of the year. Elevation, obviously, we can do different things with elevation, but again, due to limited right-of-way or right-of-way issues potentially, we could be limited on that as well. But those are all features that from a design and drainage standpoint that we would look at with the team.
There are also maybe, maybe worth looking into, although we try to avoid it just because of the sheer cost, is additional parcels to provide the stormwater treatment and more. We know you have your downtown area under one permit and working with the ledgers and all that on that one, but there's maybe others where we utilize some other land either owned by the city, county perhaps, or others where we can, again, create something that's a benefit to all, not only the community, the city, but all residents and people, so.
Great.
And quite frankly, the engineer may not want to tell you this, but sometimes you're just not going to keep it all dry all the time.
I think we're out of time. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And best of luck to you.
Great, thank you. All right, Counsel, we are on break until 1:00.